We're going to call our October meeting, make that more education in session. We always get to start off with a moment of silence. So I would ask everyone if you would please rise. And we'll turn to our board member, Mr. Kay, if you would please.
We've done this for a few years now. This time, we like to have a moment of silence for our veterans scattered throughout this world in harm's way. Most of us either have children, grandchildren, parents, whatever, that are in or have been. So if you would, bow ahead and have a moment of silence.
Thank you. Now we have the pleasure, I understand, we have the fourth graders who meet Franklin are here to help lead us in our place of allegiance. Ms. Montgomery, are you?
Right here.
If you would, come up and introduce the children for us and tell us. You want to tell us what your first class is. And we like to turn around so everybody can see you guys. She's going to introduce you. How's that? Okay, y'all come up front here, guys. Come up here and lean up, line up around the front of us. Come on right here. There we go. We got one still, but she's coming.
Okay. We have, from Ms. Warley's class, we have Jake Hughes. We also have Olivia Presley, Olivia, from Ms. Warley's class. We have Sarah Alvera, right here, and she is from Ms. Parker's class. Owen Downs, from Ms. Parker's class. And you have Carla Holland and Alla Williams, from Ms. Parker's class. Are you all ready? Okay. The term is like, I think it is, here we go. And begin.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
And they all do it exactly. I was listening and everyone was there exactly. Thank you for the parents for bringing them out. Children, y'all, that's, no, that's the highlight of the meeting, shall we say. Prove a minute. I think all the boards had a chance to leave, read the minutes from our regular scheduled meeting of September 23rd, and then the continuing meeting on the 24th. Were there any questions, changes, additions? If not, I hear motion for approval. If there is a second. Have motion, all in favor, sit if I say an aye. Any opposed, so moved. Next is our spotlight on people programs, and Chris, you're center stage.
It'd be tough to follow those fourth graders, but I think we've got a close second with recognition of our teacher of the year, principal of the year, and support staff of the year. Again, with teacher of the year, Ms. Melissa Fates, from South Lake. Besides being an outstanding teacher, she's also a presenter this past year at the regional science, what was it?
National Teacher of Science.
And she will be a speaker at the National Council for Teachers of English this month.
In November.
Congratulations. And our principal of the year, Shirley Parks. With no introduction, making the count. She serves a variety of positions in the county and does an outstanding job, doing outstanding job now.
Thank you.
Fourth person of the year goes to Diane Brindle. And finally, Ms. Collins, Ms. Jeanne Collins, Ms. Devin Deal, along with Enrique and Walter Sanchez. And Walter Wood, from Franklin High School, FFA. They took some of the decorations from Macon County Fair and brought them over here and decorated the central office for us. We really appreciate that. The FFA does a great job and is a great asset to Franklin High School and Franklin community. Thank you.
This is our third year in partnership with Linda Bubell, and so we thought this year it would be nice to recognize some teachers who were doing a really good job with the program. This year, we brought on the math part of Linda Bubell, which is on cloud nine. And Angie Martin is a Title I teacher at East Franklin Elementary. And she has kind of taken the bull by the horns this year and did a lot of data collection and testing with some kids, and so has now started small group math with grades K through four, and is also co-teaching in a kindergarten classroom in that math program. So we just wanted to recognize Angie. She's also our math foundations trainer, and we've been really pleased to find how well OCN and Math Foundations have gone together. We trained about 40 additional teachers in OCN this year, so we're really excited about where it's headed. So we just want to recognize Angie tonight.
Thank you.
Presentations, I think first on our agenda was kindergarten ID bracelets. Brooke Waldrop.
Well, those are pretty hard acts to follow, all of the kids and everyone that sends it to Linda Bubell. Good evening. My name is Brooke Waldrop. I'm a student at Western Carolina for the last year, working on an elementary A degree. So thank you very much for having me in your schools. The idea was born by Ms. Owens, who is my host teacher at East Franklin. She had spent a lot of time in the medical places, specifically the Brown Center, open Western, caring for her brother that was ill. She called me this, back before school started, and said, Brooke, what do you think about ID bracelets? And I thought, well, sounds pretty good. Let's get them and see what we can do with them. So for my leadership project, which is a project I had to do for Western as part of my electronic evidence licensure for Samakon and teaching group, we decided to roll with the project. I presented it to a safety committee that I had joined at East Franklin, and they thought it was a good idea to work with, and we got approval from Ms. Parks to go with it, and we began work. On the ID bracelet, she passed the title bracelet. It would have the student's first and last name, their homeroom teacher's name, and their student ID number that's used in the cafeteria. It would also have their major route home, and any major, major concerns, medical allergies, diabetes, things like that. It would be students in kindergarten coming to school will be asked to wear the bracelet for the first two weeks, and we would send a letter to the parents explaining what the bracelet was for. Our goal in this project is to partner with Angel Medical Center, who has expressed interest in helping our schools. We have no cost with the bracelets to Macon County schools because they would be going into the hospital. And with your permission, we could get this in full swing for every, every school in Macon County for the next year. On this picture, we've got Ms. Sumner, the guidance counselor at East Franklin. And the first day of school with kindergarten is very important. Some have never been away from home, some have not been away from their parents. And when you can call a child by their first name, it gives them a sense of ease and sort of makes their day a little bit easier. Another, another way we thought the bracelets could help was with P.E. at the same time. It's hard on the P.E. teachers to know everybody's first name those first couple of days and weeks because of the multitude of students. I noticed in the first two weeks of school, before we had our lunch cards for the kids to eat, that a lot of times when they got up, this is a picture of Ms. Sandy at East Franklin, when they got up to tell them their names to go through and pay for their meal, a lot of them would respond with only their first name. Some would just look and smile. They weren't exactly sure how to answer the question or what was being asked. This is, you know, could be really helpful for English language learners to have that to sort of get through to cafeteria to learn. With the school schedules, when you get behind it, it makes it very difficult to catch back up that time. Finally, Linda Bubell's audit part of the day on kindergartners, when they go home and try to figure out what their routine is to get home, whether that be a bus or with their parents putting them up. We thought it would also be a helpful idea for bus drivers to know a child's name and also their teacher, if they need to contact them with any issues. I would like to ask your permission to continue working on this project for the next year. I'll be graduating from Western in a few seconds, but would like to continue working on this project so that everybody can have access to it for the next school year. Again, I want to thank the school board and Macon County schools for having me, Ms. Parks and Ms. McGalbro at East Franklin, as well as Ms. Owens and Ms. Smith for welcoming me into their room. Also, Dr. Frances McIntyre Bishop is in the back row. She is my university supervisor at Western, and has really made a difference, in my experience. So if there's any questions, can I be the answer man, or I'd like to ask permission to keep on doing that?
I have a quick question. This is on opt-in permission first sort of basis.
Right. The parents would be aware of our, of our goal with the bracelet, and that would be sent home hopefully in the first packet that goes to newcomer to school.
And so they said that slide that you showed us that had all the information that's listed on, the parents see what all is going to be listed on?
And is there a follow-up? Is there a follow-up on that, where we ensure that all the parents have gotten that and we get back from them, either they're opting in or opting their child out on that?
I think the best place to do that would be in the days when they first, the first two days, like we did two half-days at East Franklin where the boys' students hang one day, and then the female students come day, hang one day, and we got all the paperwork finalized. We also are going to have to investigate a way then if there's a change, you know, especially the transportation aspect of it. So, and also another idea that I had had too, in terms of the medical condition, is almost maybe a way to color code with a certain stripe, like for an allergy, so that everybody, there was a baseline of things that they would know, a guide that all the teachers had, as well as, you know, members of the tribe.
So that would be based around is what it would look like?
That's just what the hospital bracelets would look like. We then took and wrote on the bracelets with a marker, you know, the information that I shared, but that's, yeah, that's just like what you would see if you went into.
They wear this thing, they in that?
Yeah, anyway, just like if you were a hospital patient.
Yeah. You can get them off.
Right.
And the medical information, how do you derive it from?
Based on what the parents fill out, and the nurse, right, and what the nurse, it would be like the information that a school nurse had.
I think it's a good idea. I'm sure during the first couple of weeks of school, young people get on the wrong bus, and when you're trying to find that child, if somebody called back in and said, they're on my bus, it's a big relief to everybody that you've got a lost child there, that they're on the wrong bus.
Especially for the little ones that may not be able to tell you, hey, wait, this isn't.
I don't really.
Right. We, you know, we had some issues, but you know, kids weren't even used to answering their name. When you ask the name, they even tell you maybe their first name, and not include their last name. So I think it can only help to make the schools and the issues like going home and eating more safer, and that everyone's mind is a little bit.
Did I understand you said that you had tried this already on some students?
We did it just in our classroom, in Ms. Owens' classroom.
How old did they keep those bracelets?
They did remarkable as well. I think we ended up having to redo it too.
Because I have two actually in kindergarten, and I can imagine that.
They were, they were pretty snugly fit, and we did that not to where they couldn't move it, but tried to, you know, and Skylar, the little girl that was showing the bracelet, she was very much, she thought it was an accessory, you know, it sort of worked out. It worked, it worked pretty well. I think we replaced two out of the 20, 21 we had.
Are you aware of any other schools that are, have a similar program to this, you know, if anybody else is trying? Just curious if they've had.
Right. No, I'm not. I've heard of people doing, you know, cards and things, but with kindergarten, it's so much easily that it's attached to the body instead of having a card that they might, you know, drop one down the hall or lose. And I can say, as a kindergarten teacher, now, we, like when they go to P.E., the first few days, we put name stickers on, things like that, but they, those peel off really quick. And a lot of, you'd be amazed at how many kindergarten students don't know their last name, and some of them, their official first name is different from what they've always been called at home, so they don't recognize that either. It's such a new experience for so many of them. Sometimes if you ask them what their name is, they just don't say it. Different kind of phrase in the beginning.
So you think the bracelets are a good idea?
Yes, I do. It would be a good idea.
It goes for two weeks, though, right?
Yeah, I mean, there, if, look, you got an ELL student that maybe needs it longer. I mean, if they're resource, if you have the resources, they can continue to use it. What, yours and all your grandkids? My, my own son, you know, he probably within the first two weeks, he's going to catch, catch on it. I don't think everyone would know it by then, but for some, some learners though, or even children, you know, with speech impediments or disabilities, I think it'd only help.
Lunchtime, you do have, actually.
Right. Because at least, you know, we spend a lot of time those first two weeks just trying to get him, get through, get to general.
I'm always the negative one, so bear with me, Brooke, for asking this question. It concerns me a little bit that if we, if you have a child that goes off and this is permanently attached to them, if they're in a Walmart somewhere, basically we're giving information to people, what that child's name is.
Right. And I've thought about that too.
And bad things can happen when that happens. So I don't know, is there, have we thought about some way else? Even at a school, or anything along those lines? Yeah, that's why I was thinking, considering this is a thing that can take off something that you can take off. Well, that's great.
That you, that you would, you would take off to get us more through the school day, is what you're, like through the lunch, not necessarily talking about the.
Or that, or even basically, like maybe on weekends where they, it would be given during, something during school, because they know they're going home hopefully to their parents, but on weekends, it's a little bit different creature.
Right.
Something the teacher could collect after they sent you.
That would be great, yeah. With those plaques, we can take them off and eat them, which would maybe, and I don't throw this too, even if they, when they, if they did wear them home, if there is a way you could put the information more on the inside of the rest so that it's not so exposed if you're having a dinner now, but I think we could pull them off and just keep them, because I mean, they attach with just the plaques, we can reuse them.
I think it's a good idea. I also want to give John one more time. He's got that thoughtful expression on his face, so we need to give him a little time to think of what there's to think. If you could fine tune it, I'm speaking for myself, if you could come up and think about what I've said a little bit, and bring it back to us, I think it's got a lot of merit.
All right, we'll do. Thank you, everybody, for your time, and God bless the county and our students.
And thank you for taking the time to do this.
You're welcome.
Appreciate you taking the time. Doorlight demonstrations. I think I'll have David, he's here somewhere, and then I think Carl is lurking in the hallway.
It's a full house committee. And a lot of all the things that have happened with the school system throughout the base in the last couple of years and up until present time, the county commissioners asked that committee be formed, and it was some school people and some liaisons with the county, make our schools more secure, more safe for our students. And this started, actually, last year and is continuing up into this year. And one of the things that we've looked at primarily is some means to contain or control access to the buildings, with the thought being if we could keep people who did not belong in the building outside the building, perhaps we could make it a safer environment for the children. And we've investigated quite a few ways of doing this, looked at a lot of different things. The recommendation that I'm going to bring to the board, the board's consideration, was actually put forth by, in its first inception, by the joint committee of the county commissioners and the representative and the board personnel, and myself. As I said, we've looked at quite a few ways, and brought with me tonight, Carl Glazbi, representative for National Communications Incorporated, local provider of security for Macon County. Carl's done tremendous amount of work with the school system as far as cameras, the different things we use to try to control access and who is coming into our campuses and our buildings. And Carl has product that we would like to present to the board with their consideration. Dr. Ball, with myself, Tim Burl, our Internet IT director, has looked at this product, and we think that this is probably our first step that we will take towards obtaining this goal, or making our campuses more safe. And at this time, I'll turn it over to Mr. Glazbi, let him demonstrate his product to the board. He has an MO set up over here on the board, on the table, and he'll show you how it would operate on the front door of the school, or whoever decided to be put.
This, the product that we recommend, is a product that we have used in several other school systems, Ashford West. With what's going on in our nation, there's been a big push to control access into schools. Schools are a little bit unique in that we typically have several entrances into schools, some of which we can control, some of which we can't. The newer schools are designed more to have one central point of ingress, egress, so that that makes our job a little easier. This product is a, is a full-scale access control system. They, this particular company, recognized the need for something for schools, and they have specialized in a product that, that works very well in school. This, what you see right here is what you will find at the entry of a school. It contains a camera, a keypad, a display, and a card reader. This is well-approved and valid possession, so it's, it's made to be put out in element, and it's made to take a circumstantial use. Can it withstand anything that a student could do? Absolutely not, but within reason, absolutely. The desk station, which typically would go at the front desk, it can go anywhere that we choose to put them, we can support any number of these door devices with any number of these desk devices, so it's very flexible. Because of the network environment of the school system, it will be transparent where these are located, whether they're being at Ohio, Middle School, or wherever they're at, because of the network, they'll be able to see these devices on the network, because these are network devices, okay? What that will do is allow, in the event that there needs to be a central access or open all the door, or whatever, certain doors, they'll be able to view certain doors from anywhere on the network, as long as people are given the proper permission to do that, they can do that. A key component of this is in the event that we have someone that no longer won't give access, rather than have to go and buy all the different controllers and change it, we said, in one place, put one, that particular user, and delete them from all of the keyboards. So it's centrally managed, which makes it great. It doesn't have to have its connection back to anywhere to function, so in the event that that network failure happens, I'll forget where it did, then this thing presses on, you know, it, it doesn't need that. And it connects back, then it's going to say, okay, give me any apps that you've got, and I'm going to give you all these transactions, what's been going in and out since you left me, and then we're going to be back in sync again. The beauty of this product is we can, we can give folks different means of access. We can give them a number, we can give them a card, which can be integrated into your current card system, it's just like what you have, and then you have a small fob. Very, very simple, you swipe it, it says the door and unlock. It tells you the door is open, there's a timer built in, and it's going to lock the door behind. So these, we use a lot of these, a lot of management will have a card, and they will have a fob sitting in the garden, a lot of times, management will be, will come in on Saturday, things of that nature, and they don't want to have the bad with it, they have the keys with them, so, you know, it's no problem having multiple cards or multiple fobs for a single user. Any of those can be added or deleted, basically on one click. User comes up, it says, press call button to call. They press it, this handset rings, the video comes up, they answer it. Either they can answer it via speakerphone, or via the handset. They have visual recognition of who's there, they click on, lock, and then it trips the door. So it's just, you know, we, we typically, when we put these in a school, we put them in, and you go by, trying takes about 15 minutes. It's very, very, very simple. Sometimes you have a turnover at school, so that's another great feature, you know, that's very training everybody. Thus far, since Plaxton came out with this product, this, to me, is a key, key component. We have had no hardware upgrades. All of our upgrades have been via software. So the controller that actually controls this, there's several different inputs and contacts on it that are not even used now. And the plan is, is as this technology changes, and we need those for whatever they may be that we don't even know at this point, then we're going to be able to do that with a software upgrade, there, you know, that can simplify, like that, that upgrade, and they back in the, we go. So it's something that I think meets the needs today, it's something that we have in place, so that the school system can just finish installing prime off. It's a very good system, so in a way, if they have to save you and fight you, I'll run to it. It's a lot. Questions? If it's a card, how do you access it if you just record your job, and it comes to the school? John Doe doesn't have a card. We're going to walk up, and I know you can't read it from over there, this says, press bell button to call. You press, press the little button, it's got the bell on, and it rings the handset. If you have your card or your fob, actually, there's a little indicator on here, it tells you where to swipe, and it's about a two-inch read, so you don't have to, you know, fret about it. And it, you know, one of the key things with this product, it's logging. When you came in, it's logging. If you delete a card, it will log that as well, as if somebody tried to gain access with a deleted card. All of this is stored in database here. If it's connected by. If it's connected back to the server, it's established and we'll send it.
Carl, what kind of field of vision will that camera provide for the person that's sitting there?
That's a great question. Naturally, the field of vision gets wider the farther that you get. We, one of the, early on, one of the challenges that we have in this type of access control is you need to be able to capture a two-and-a-half-foot tall child and his six-foot daddy. So this lens is designed to do that. And just to give you an idea, the field of view is coming out right in front of me. So we've, we have had a couple of schools that the way the doors were designed and the glass and it were existing, and it was impossible to get the camera as close as we would like to the door. We actually had a bracket made that turned this about 30 degrees so that it was offset away from the door and it turned so that it captured who was walking up. So we have a bracket that was made for those special applications. I don't think we will have that anywhere here, but there are times that with what's existing, you can't get there. And you end up having to move this thing too far to the side where it's outside of that field of view. And what this is, is just a pie-shaped bracket, it's not fancy about it. It just turns the same over about a 30-degree angle.
Carl, could we adjust that camera so that more can see what it looked like? If Renee was coming up to the door and pressing the call button, can you hold up the phone?
If the lens cover gets scratched, is it easy to replace it without replacing the entire unit? If the lens cover gets scratched, is it easy to replace the cover without replacing the whole face?
The way that this system is designed is kind of neat. From, all of the electronics is sealed in a O-ring vacuum. And where this cable comes in through the back, it's in its own little sealed O-ring compartment to keep weather such out. Once you take this off, all of it, this is one piece, this is a piece, and this is a piece, and this is a piece, and this is a piece. So if a speaker failed, you just pop this off, take the cover off, replace the speaker and everything. So it's totally, totally different parts all of it.
Two quick points I'd like to make also, talking about the same product. Look at the principal's role back around the back row and all that. If you give access to your building to coach number 44 for basketball practice, X number of Saturday mornings, you issue one of these cards. If the day that you decide in advance that the card no longer works, and the card no longer works, they're out of the system, they can't get back in. As a matter of fact, it records when recorded an illegal attempt at entry. If they bring that card back at any point, it's not authorized. And the second point I'd like to make is still talking about access and control. If we had this product or similar product, whatever we end up with, but an IP-based, internet-based product on our buildings, and the sheriff's department should call Dr. Baldwin and say we've got a dangerous person in our territory and need to lock down, he can lock down every door from his desk instantly with one of these controllers.
Every door that's connected.
Every door that's connected, this device can be blocked by the superintendent.
At that particular school, Dave?
At any of them.
You can discern it if it's one school's got to lock down the entire system.
Yeah, or you can do it system-wide.
But you could also have some system.
Yeah, you can do it system-wide, you can do it individual buildings. Sometimes maybe the superintendent will be notified before the branch screen off or something.
One of the benefits that I see with this device is that by using this, Carto de Jarry South Lake and Anahalo, we reduce the need, if not virtually eliminate the need, to reconfigure those lobbies. And it's a savings that we could use to purchase additional cameras and plus it's going to be I, you know, still at high.
Carl, when you said that it logs transactions, I take it that means it doesn't keep video or snapshots or?
We could, the newest software update has just become available, which we have not loaded in. So I will say this with caution, I have no reason to believe it or import it. We haven't, I haven't had my hands on it, so I'll say that. Is what that software will allow us to do is it will give us IP integration through radio being cell phones. So you'll be able to view that video, play the video, and it will allow the recording of that video through a network recorder, which the school system already has in place here. So if they choose to do that, then that appears, that is available with this latest framework. We haven't tested that yet, but that's the latest, greatest.
We were discussing putting those cameras at Carto de Jarry South Lake and Anahalo. And this call, this device is basically the same, we're discussing, along with reconfiguration those lobbies.
So I understood Dr. Baldwin was saying that by using these, we avoid the call to the reconfig, having to reconfigure those lobbies, which allows us to, that's why we put this in.
Basically, what we're doing with that, with those other devices, the cameras, we can see who was coming up in the front building, but they actually entered the building, and then we're going to allow them to come into the secretary's office and then buzz them down the hall, open the hall doors when they get down. With this device, we're able to identify the person and decide at that point we're going to allow them to build along.
That's, that's.
I spoke to Mr. Bryan about this device last, last Tuesday. He agreed that this would eliminate the count, the need for reconfiguration.
And I understand the department that they were saying, the school system, we're, you know, the more controlled layout, actually, however, most reasonable, if you're out of order, it's still allowed.
If the superintendent locks down a building, is there a bypass so we could let law enforcement into a certain door?
Yeah, you can go, you could go to any controller, any desk stand.
We still haven't found any magic for classroom doors, have we? I've, I've, any magic? I know for the new buildings, I bet the teacher can lock the doors and outs, outside when they enter. For some of the older buildings, the teacher has to come out and lock the door. We're actually closing, that's it. But that's an older building, right?
That's the older building, it's the last building we built, was the first one that came under that cover.
MBI question. Does MBI have it? They don't have it.
I guess you're going to bring, Chris, Dr. Baldwin, correct? We're not ready, you don't have a call, total calls or a proposal for us at this point, is that right?
We do not have everything completed. We just, we want to get this drawn to the board and consider it.
Carl, just to be sure, the cameras that we had discussed, putting them in, is on interest or is virtually the same cost as this system?
Yes. The special needs, the people, the district staffs have downloaded, but us only found this for them.
Just to reconfigure the lobbies and purchase cameras, just not the other.
Their budget this year will be lower, or what access to that looks like?
Well, that's the panic warning that Tim has applied for.
He applied for that grant, like you're correct, with the grant application through there in Raleigh by December 2nd.
Any other more questions? I'm not going to brush you, Carl.
Right, quick question, the software update, how often does that happen and is that very expensive?
The, right now, we're seeing a software update. The software updates right now are driven more by specific needs than they are to fix a bunch of stuff. There's two reasons the manufacturer does software updates. One, you don't really ever know about, and that's going to fix a bunch of stuff that didn't work last time. And then the other reason they have software updates is if there's a new application, if they're fixing a bunch of stuff, they're not telling us and we're off to a bigger, more, yes, replace our things up. Another thing like, you know, I can call them and talk to the person in the county and get somewhere with them.
But maintenance is not really expensive.
Carl, breaking, if I'm wrong, but if that's connected to a server, can we push out software updates to run that server to do every device?
Go visit everything. They should come up and visit before it starts. Any other questions? No, I'm assuming you're going to bring us a proposal, what, at our next meeting or something, is that right? Okay. Thank you, Carl, we appreciate it very much, thanks. Lynn Ryan, Government Purchasing Alliance, is Mr. Troy on here?
Yes.
Oh, yes, right.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm with Carquest Auto Parts and also US Communities. And the reason why we're here tonight, we wanted to share with you what US Communities can do for your municipality. We've spoken that with Dr. Baldwin before and also Randy Stoddard, the manager of the school bus garage. And the US Communities program was originally founded in Charlotte, North Carolina. And what it does is it gives every municipality in the country that chooses to join US Communities the buying power of the entire country, not of just our 66 buses and the school bus garage over here. So what it does is it's significant and can reduce the price of the parts that the school bus garage is using every day, starting with filters, which is the centerpiece of the program. And the filters, presented, Dr. Baldwin allowed back a list, and we did a comparison of what you're currently paying from your supplier versus what we would be charging you for the same filter. The quality is the same, the filter is the same, the price is anywhere from 15 to 50% less. The other side of the point is with the store, our Carquest store is here in Franklin, and the owner Ricky is here tonight. Carquest is a company that's owned partly by company stores and partly by independent stores. So to do this program, Ricky is an independent owner, had agreed to sign on with us ahead of time, and he has done that. So the US Communities program can save you a significant amount of money. And we're not just talking about auto parts, that's what I represent, that's what our company's contracted for. But US Communities, anything from toilet paper to furniture to office supplies, you can go on, your purchasing folks can go on there, and you can deal with the people that have those individual contracts, and you can save a lot of money. Haywood County has recently signed on to Haywood County School Bus Garage. Monmouth County School Bus Garage in Asheville has signed on. We have several municipalities in Knoxville that have signed on. It's a very major program, and it costs you nothing. When I say sign on, it's already done. You're already registered with US Communities as a municipality, and the pricing discount structure is already in place at the store for the account number that we use for the Macon County School Bus Garage. So what we're suggesting is that this is a way to help, I don't want to say balance your budget, but it certainly can ease the pain on your monthly part supplies.
Balance our budget, we would.
Carquest is a North Carolina corporation, we're based out of Raleigh, North Carolina. I work in this region, I live in Asheville. Ricky has been my customer from the time that he opened a store about eight or nine years ago. And I find him to be of the utmost quality, and he does what he says he'll do. That then said, the thing that I would like to bring up and mention to you all, because I don't see it as a conflict for my company, but I would like to be sure that there's no misconception on anyone's part. Ricky's the owner of Carquest Auto Parts, Ricky's brother works at the Macon County School Bus Garage. Now, for me, that's not an issue, and it wouldn't be an issue that we even have to bring up if they weren't brothers, but they are. And I'd like you to know upfront that that's there so that it can never be brought back later on. And you say, nobody told us, we didn't talk about this, we didn't know about that. It's no conflict as far as Carquest Auto Parts and US Communities is concerned, and here's why. When Ricky agreed to sell to Macon County School Bus Garage as a US Communities customer, he has to buy it by the contract, he can't change prices, he can't raise it, he can't lower it. They're set in the computer, and they're actually set by someone like me. So there's no, there's nothing that can ever be changed with respect to those prices. It's, and we do that for everybody, whether they're brothers or not, we do that all over the country. So I just wanted you to be aware of it, because.
If we do choose to go with this, this doesn't mean that we have to buy solely the front car for us. Randy still could refer to it as he does now, that's sharper than the best product.
Right, exactly. What it means, Dr. Baldwin, is that he can call, one of the things we were looking at, one of the things we talked about was possibly reducing the amount of inventory that has to be in the garage over here. If we keep the filters in the store, we keep the rums in the store, we keep the friction in the store, and Randy needs it, he simply calls the store or is it online, we'll be there, and we'll bring it to him. So that can, he could reduce his inventory in the garage if he chose to. I think your supplier now, or suppliers now, most of them are from out-of-town and surrounding areas. So would actually, your service level may go up just a little bit while your pricing goes down. Any questions, anything that I can add?
You know, Dr. Baldwin brought this up to us before, and I want to make a point up to the board and then discuss this. This is not going to be top of the barrier to anyone that would like to bid on these services. Obviously, what we do is they would be on there, we would give anyone else like to come into places to be able to avoid the appearance of conflict. And it's just a matter, yeah, it's going to beat the price of bid if they can't, we'll do any, take advantage of our savings that we should give.
You know, we ran into a situation last year, you guys needed a brake drum. And whoever your supplier was, your first supplier, they couldn't get it here quick enough. So I guess you went to a second source, which would have been someone in this area. And they had the drum, but while they were looking for that drum, they also called Ricky. Ricky was exactly half the price of that particular drum that day. He had it in stock, your other supplier didn't. So, I mean, I'm not going to say we can sit here and do mountains, but the US Communities, what it does is it takes Macon County and it elevates you to a national presence because of the fact that you're buying with all the other municipalities in the country. And that allows us to give you the very best discount that we can. It's the best discount that Carquest Auto Parts offers just to US Communities customers. There is no contract, you simply pick up the phone tomorrow and call Ricky and order a filter. And that's as simple as it gets. All the paperwork from his standpoint is done, the savings are immediate. And Dr. Baldwin knows what those are, I showed him the filters. Now, filters are the main thing, but not the only thing. And then along the lines of that US Communities program, there's a lot of other things that possibly you guys might want to take a look at that doesn't involve auto parts or truck parts or school bus parts, but could offer you significant savings. And you can go into that website, it's in that paperwork that I gave you, and you can look at it and check it out.
So I would look at you next, my next step, so.
John, I would look at you next, my next step, so.
And Mr. Chairman, another board employee of the schools who is sort of tangentially involved. I don't think it's any sort of statutory problem. I mean, the statute, the relevant statute's fourteen dash two thirty-four. And what it says is no public officer or employee who is involved in making or administering a contract on behalf of public agency may derive a direct benefit. I don't think that this particular employee, he's certainly not a public officer. I don't think this employee is involved in administering whatever this is and it's not a contract. I, I, and it just, that's not just a dodge either because I really don't, don't feel like there's any sort of direct benefit being passed along here. If, if there is one, it's...
We're the contractor, we're the owners, not them, so.
Right.
Well, the other issue too is the length of the transportation of the burden is so tight. Randy will be looking at the best deal possible.
We're like most brothers, I don't agree with him. I don't know.
What action do we need to take, Dr. Baldwin? Or, you know, is this something we need to get more approval on? Or it's just a presentation and we simply allow our department heads to make those decisions, John?
Well, I haven't actually seen the, if there is a further agreement or what, or it's just a...
It's not an agreement. This is just an overview.
Okay. I mean, if there's no contract to intervene to, I don't really feel like it needs any formal board action. This is just sort of a...
Noticing, noticing.
Making you aware and releasing you have serious concerns about your employees.
Yes, sir.
Save money.
Any concerns about the idea of the board?
To me, I think it's just a presentation because anybody else, your competitors, if Randy wants to do business with them, it's his business. He's head of that department. And you should be penalized costly brothers if that's the Carquest.
And that's a good point. I think right now we're penalizing ourselves because of Randy's involvement with the local Carquest. We're having to go all the way to Clayton, Georgia to buy from Carquest when Carquest is the, obviously, better deal. And we don't want to buy from a store that Randy's partner of. By doing this with the national president says, was described, he was an opportunity to buy locally and save people more money.
Well, that's where it sounds like we heard his name about this, so we could probably, if we'd done it earlier, we could have made it.
Well, this program's been around for a number of years, but we're a contracted vendor to US Communities. What that means is we hold the contract for the auto parts part of the US Communities. And we've had it for, this will be the end of the second year. We have an automatic renewal for the next four years as long as we meet our performance goals. And I'll give you an idea. We set a goal this year of nationwide of forty-two million dollars. Unless something changes in the next few weeks, we're going to cede that by four million dollars this year or, or basically ten percent. And that is all the municipalities all over the country and just some of the local ones that I just named. So the savings is there, it's real.
Lots of, give Randy our blessing and let him, he's already proven that he's doing a great job and let him continue to do so.
And Mr. Chairman, this, another thing, Angie and I just remember that this, that had been a sore topic with our auditors over the years. We didn't have a purchasing system of checks and balances in place. We've got that now and so we're so above board on this, it's not even funny. It'll all come through the, the police officers whenever they ask and she'll, she'll police bend and...
She's good.
Police. Keep that badge here, boy.
This, I'll try to address that door and do what we're supposed to do, which is say, anything else? All right. Thank you. We appreciate it very, very much. Mr. Conway is here, I see. A day on all the utilities.
Yes, sir. No, that, that one, just go to the... Y'all all know who I am, you know what I do. Uh, I'll try to go through this pretty quick. In my world, there's two terms, energy efficiency and energy conservation. Energy efficiency is going from an incandescent to an LED. That's energy efficiency. Energy conservation is turning that light off. And so theoretically, we have people plus technology equals energy efficiency in my world. Here are the questions that we need to ask when we're looking at energy here in the K-12 school. What impact does a rate increase have? Everybody knows deep car race rates, another five point two percent, right?
Yes.
To Macon, to Macon County Schools, that's going to be almost fifty thousand dollars next year in added electricity costs. With you doing nothing, you're going to pay more. What impact?
We've got better news than that. That's good.
I'm working, I'm working that way.
Good.
What impact do I have as a teacher, as a student, as a faculty member, as just somebody bringing my son or daughter to school? How do we reduce our carbon footprint? Do we care about our carbon footprint? Some people do, some people don't. And then what can we do to save money? Not necessarily save money with the added increases that we're seeing in utilities across the state, but we're reducing what we're having to pay if we wouldn't have taken the steps. We're having some avoided costs, but not just money. We're saving the environment, we're saving our resources. So remember, who pays the bills for the K-12 school here in the county? All county taxpayers. Your local tax dollars pay a light bill for every K-12 school, every county building and a community college here in Macon County. So these are your local tax dollars at work. We're going to look at some of the different things as we move through here. I have the privilege of working out of the western part of the state and I've gone statewide most of the year looking at other K-12 schools. And this is probably by far one of the cleanest K-12 school systems I've been in in a long, long time. And, and well-maintained, everybody was real friendly. A lot of times when I walk into a K-12 school, even though I'm with a facility maintenance person, very rarely does somebody stop me and say, hey, who are you? I got that here and I like it because a lot of places I go, I don't get checked. What I did see, especially with David and with what the facility, with what facility maintenance is doing, especially on the HVAC control side, you're doing the best with what resources you have available to be energy efficient. But we still can do better, okay? And we're going to look at some of that. Lottie, you still have some old K-12 bulbs in your building, but you're continuing to convert to a more energy efficient bulb. We need to look at some switching issues where we can switch certain sections off instead of running a whole bunch of lights in certain places. We need to look at some switching. We need to begin to look at LEDs in certain areas. LEDs are coming in by gangbusters. And the first place you need to look at LEDs are places where they're hard to get to or they burn twelve, fourteen, twenty-four hours a day. That's the first place that you need to look at LEDs. We need to replace incandescents. We need to look at adding some occupancy sensors in a few places. And then we need to continue to convert the gyms from those old high bay metal headlights that go out, take fifteen minutes to come on to something that's instantaneous, like a T-five fixture. A lot of K-12 schools throughout the, throughout the state with the recovery money converted gymnasiums, the light level goes tremendously better in the gyms. In fact, one, I think it was one of the elementary schools in Rutherford County removed thirty-six of those big high bay lights, went back with twelve two-foot by four-foot T-five fixtures in the same gymnasium. We went from thirty-six fixtures to twelve. Now, we did have some dark spots up high around the exterior, wasn't my design. But as far as the floor went, it was more, it had more light on it than it did before. And the cool thing is instant on, instant off. When no classes are in there, we can turn the lights off. If our principals will work with our athletic folks to switch lights off. Mechanical, probably the biggest thing is trying to continue, natural gas and electricity have to go for any cost increase have to go through the utility commission. So at Franklin High School, you do have natural gas, so I would recommend that if you get a chance to convert some of the fuel boilers to natural gas, it'll be about a third the cost from a fuel standpoint. Some timers on water heaters. And more than anything else, HVAC is normally about sixty to seventy percent of your monthly bill in a K-12 school. And with what I've saw from David and his ability to control temperature set point, continue doing what he's doing. He's doing a great job on that particular piece. Plumbing, I'm going to talk China, continue to change out to high-flow China. Right now, across the state, water is up almost two hundred percent in the last twelve years. Water's getting to be a huge commodity, so we want to continue to make sure that our, our China's lower flow and we're saving water. And then we need to monitor our irrigations on our fields, especially the ones with city water. And we need to make sure that those are on a separate meter so that we're not getting charged sewer for water we're putting back in the ground into the aquifer. Building, weather stripping, these are all simple stuff. Weather stripping, door sweeps, windows closed with HVAC on, doors closed. And security is a must. This will back up on what David is saying. I've got some pictures that I'll show you in a minute. As far as other issues, we do have quite a bit of unnecessary plug load, things that we can gut out of some of these buildings that don't necessarily have to be there to educate our children. We need to verify some of the energy uses of the appliances. And a lot of these small appliances are rated for residential use. They're not rated for commercial use in our commercial buildings. So if something happens to that device, it catches fire, burns up, it gives insurance away not to pay for the fixing because it wasn't supposed to be here in the first place. We don't want to unplug devices when we leave for summer and on long holidays. And then, as always, be diligent to keep this stuff out of our school.
Mr. Conway, can you go back to that personal devices? Exactly, what are you referring to?
Plug load, personal refrigerators, space heaters, microwave, toaster oven, pretty much anything that doesn't necessarily have to be there.
What do you estimate Kyle's savings would be for our school system?
Uh, roughly, from what I, what I've seen, once we got away from the high school, the plug load went way down. The, the, in, in my world, the high school was even, just, I'm just, I'll give it to you like, don't... You know, he'll be, he's still, he'll be... But yeah, once we got rid of the, once we got out of the high school, plug load went way down, but it's something that's going to have to be addressed by policy everywhere. I'm probably figuring somewhere around five percent of your, of your total utility budget just by having some type of policy against what we can and can't have in the building.
That's the total?
So...
Eight hundred thousand total, so we're looking at four thousand, so we got a lot?
Yeah. That would be a conservative estimate, not to mention some of this other stuff. That's part of that. So, but I've got some pictures. Just the lights on in the vending machine is, the usage on the vending machine is about six hundred dollars a year. A hundred dollars of that's just in the lights. So you pick up the phone, you call your lady, you call your vending company and say, hey, cut the lights off. They also make a vending mizer, which is like an occupancy sensor for these devices now that will only keep them on when somebody walks up or around them. You're already cutting them off in some schools at certain times or at least some of the K-12 schools I know are doing that. They, they enter the car racing thing now. So that's just a matter of picking up the phone because a lot of what I'm looking for, load, no cost, stuff that you can attach, that was what the plan was. It's hard to see in here, but this was a curtain that is hanging in a walk-in cooler. First K-12 school system I've been in that had curtains in there. Most of these get torn down, pulled out because the kitchen staff doesn't like them. They're designed to keep moisture from in the kitchen out of the cooler that causes problems. This is the only one I saw that had any damage to it at all. Everything else was great. And usually in a K-12 school, the kitchen area is about ten to twenty percent of your budget for utilities on an annual basis. Lots of windows open in certain places across the system. From an HVAC standpoint, if I'm paying money to change the temperature of air, I don't want it going out the window. I want it to stay in my building and I don't want air coming in my building that I'm going to have to pay to change the temperature of. Door cracks, weather stripping, this is a set of double doors leading to the exterior. Our buildings are always positive or negative pressure. If my building is negative pressure and it's ten degrees outside, I'm pulling ten degree air in through that crack into my building that I'm going to have to change the temperature of. But not just that crack, every other crack in the building that I can't see. And so if my building's positive pressure, then I'm pushing air that I paid to change the temperature of out that crack and every other crack in the building. How big is that hole right there? It's about half an inch times seven foot. That's a hole about yay big in the exterior of the wall. If we do the math. About forty, forty-five square inches, forty-some square inches right there. So weather stripping takes care of that. You can't really see this, but it's weather stripping on the exterior door. I don't know what happens to weather stripping on doors. I don't know if the kids pick at it as they walk out the door, but because it's got that rubber gasket. But it does deteriorate over a period of time and we need to be vigilant in coming back and redoing it because there again, remember, our buildings are pressurized. We want to keep the air in the building if we can. We're going to lose enough with the door opening and closing. This was at a particular elementary school. You can see the light above the top of the door. It's missing, the top doorstop, the doorstop's not there. And so now we've got about a half, three quarter of an inch hole that runs three foot wide. And David's been made aware of all of this stuff. Here's an incandescent light in a fixture. We'd love to see something more energy efficient. I would say LED at this point. Here's a pendulum fixture that's hanging in a ceiling and I don't remember which K-12 school this was here, but this would be one of the fixtures that I would try and go LED because I'm going to put maintenance in a, on a tall ladder or in a lift several times a year to change that light bulb. The savings in energy isn't going to be there. Where I'm saving money is in maintenance time and the cost of maintenance. That's where I'm saving, going to the LED in this location. Space heaters, I'm going to hit them. This one's even got the room name, room name where it belongs, so it's been here a while. These things pull about twelve hundred amps, excuse me, about fifteen hundred amps, excuse me, fifteen hundred watts, which transforms in about twelve and a half amps on normally a twenty amp circuit. And so it doesn't take much to overload the circuit, cause it's a trip to the breaker, causes them to lose productivity. These things cost you per heater about twenty dollars a month. Per heater. Did you hear that? About twenty dollars a month.
I may not got to get rid of my wife.
They're out there. They come in all shapes, forms and fashions, but I'll hit them. Here's a particular, and with the lights on in here, you can't see, this is at Franklin High School. You've got a personal refrigerator, microwave, 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 toaster oven, refrigerator. Other refrigerator right here in this picture, you've got three refrigerators, two microwaves and a toaster oven. These little refrigerators run anywhere from fifty to a hundred dollars a year per refrigerator. In this, in this section alone, you're probably pushing with these three conservative, probably about three hundred bucks a year just to have this little scenario plugged in at the high school. Why can't you provide an Energy Star refrigerator with twenty-five cubic feet for about fifty dollars a year versus this stuff? That's what I'm pushing for, is a more communal refrigerator. Here's another pretty typical of what we saw. Here's a classroom, computer, toaster oven, I mean, microwave, refrigerator set on the... the desk, and underneath the thermostat. So as it comes on and heats up, it causes the thermostat to go crazy. And so now we have heating issues in a room.
Ms. Colwell, when you did your walkthrough, well, actually that's, that next picture was what I was, I didn't get ready to ask you about.
Uh, this is what I find most of the time in these refrigerators. They're either empty or got hardly anything in it. They're not being used, but they aren't being plugged in to your electricity. Uh, that's why I take picture of them. And usually the largest majority are like that. Uh, plug being on, but nothing in it. Uh, this is another issue that we have, especially in, in most public buildings. Uh, we have somebody who gets a brand new Energy Star refrigerator at home, but their refrigerator at the house is still kicking. Uh, he gets loaded up on a truck because we need, we need something in our building and so it gets brought in and it's plugged into your electricity. And it's two or three hundred dollars a year. And they got the Energy Star one at the house paying fifty and now the school system has got this one plugged in. I see freezers, I see all sorts of stuff from home, uh, just because it's still, it's-
Well, we can afford new stuff, so we use what we got.
I, I, I understand that. But with your electricity, this is the kind of stuff that we need to look at from load no cost stuff. Uh, from a safety standpoint, uh, you can see the door to the left is blocked open with a rock, uh, so we got this whole air conditioning on, heat on, doors open. The one on the right, I actually witnessed the teacher go out the door, take an ink pen, put an ink pen in the door to keep it from locking behind her as she went out the door. So I'll, I'll put this in there from the security standpoint too, but mine is more from, uh, temperature compliance. Uh, solution, uh, for unnecessary plug load, pretty much an energy policy that the board approved and is being enforced by principals. Uh, we'd like to see the energy teams within each school to continue to go around and try and identify some of this, uh, stuff and see if there may be other ways we can save. And then just energy education. Uh, I gave the same presentation, uh, about three weeks ago when they came to the principals and so they've seen the same presentation and asked me to come back and review. Uh, pretty much reads list of what you need to do to save energy anywhere, cut stuff off, unplug unnecessary stuff, check thermostat settings, do routine maintenance, uh, create awareness to faculty, staff and students. Think about energy when we're scheduling classes and locations. Uh, a lot of the schools that I deal with, in order to have a, a basketball game and a gymnasium, they have to keep the whole school up to temperature. In my world, it's crazy. But here, you, you don't have to do that. You're able to save, you're able to, uh, isolate certain areas and only run certain areas because of what David and his staff have done with controls. And I'm buying the most energy efficient piece of equipment, keep windows and doors closed with the HVAC on and check weather stripping on windows and doors. Uh, that's it. I know I ran through it pretty quick. Questions?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
These teachers work weekends, day and night, almost sometimes?
Yes, sir.
I've got one, I know, I go with it. Unless you've got a heater in there, you're gonna freeze to death, but we cut it off.
Right.
Say all the same.
Right.
So what do I gotta do, go buy down a special type heater? Get you freezing, get pneumonia?
It, it goes back to, it goes back to a, a policy on when we're gonna have our buildings up to temperature. And then if we're gonna have our buildings up to temperature during a set occupied period, then if we have somebody who's working in what I would call an unoccupied period, well then they understand that it's unoccupied, we're jacket, you know, when it's unoccupied this time.
You hear that? I'm, I'm just, and, and some make common sense to me. I mean, I'll be honest with you, I'm ready. But this, your, your plan is great, but not when I'm freezing to death and I've got a heater to try to keep these people warm because they're having to work weekends or whatever.
Right. But I'm, but do you have a policy now on when you're occupied or unoccupied?
No, because they work on lunch hours.
Right.
I know.
Yeah. And so, you know, unless, unless David's doing something with, with the control system and, and has given you an occupied or an unoccupied set point, then it could be possible that HVAC's running Saturday and Sunday and I'm gonna ask why. Because our school, there's no students, we don't, why do we need to run the whole school for one or two teachers?
But now you're saying I gotta get rid of my little warmer.
Well, and, and, you know, does the board wanna have a policy on if you wanna have plug load, then it's a certain fee, a hundred dollars per device.
No, because my gosh, these teachers need to be have availability to help drink.
I think what we've got, thank you, this, this is just a, a real good guide for us to look at the various areas that we need to look at.
And I'm, I'm just, I'm just here to highlight load no cost and the policy for you is no cost. But there again, we already know your utility budget's going up about fifty thousand dollars next year.
I think one of the things that we could do is have the teachers consider your meal refrigerators. We could help them with that so we could have those, put all those programs out of it, but maybe have a microwave on each hall or something like that, refrigerator on each hall, actually save money for the diabetes as well.
What I, what I continue to see, not in just K-12 schools, but community colleges, local governments, is the, the continued ability to wanna have it right there next to me and not have to get up and go get it. Not going down the hall to a teacher's lounge. I want everything around me that I want.
Yeah, I do, because we don't have assistants anymore. We don't have teachers and-
I, I'm, I'm just here to show you-
I know what you're doing.
Where, where you can, you can see some savings. And if I am the, the bearer of bad news, I, I'll, I'll go with it because that's my job.
You didn't see much of this at the office.
Uh, no, once we got away from Franklin High School, uh, it went down tremendously. And I, I mean-
Their specters were there, mine already came.
Uh, I, I mean, once, like I said, uh, probably about ninety-
What's that?
I would guess about ninety percent of the class, uh, in the high school, big plug load.
When you're friends, why you gonna do that?
And then it was just, it was a straggler, one or two here or there at some of the other schools, but it went away. But, and, uh, but it's not, it's not near as bad as some of the ones I've been to support. Uh, usually it's a culture, you see it throughout the whole system, not just one location, but here it's just high school. And we walked every facility that you have, uh, and we found a couple of issues that David addressed too, uh, with some, he had an exhaust, uh, the exhaust fan over the kitchen in Anaheim, uh, had to make a fair, it was pulling some negative pressure in the building and we looked at it. So I'm just here, uh-
Mr. President, don't, don't shoot the miss.
Yeah. And so, uh, I've given, I've given Karen everything she needs to do to start really tracking utilities and start getting what those steps are in order to do that. But from my standpoint, what you're already doing from a facility standpoint with the HVAC is controlling the large yardage, that's why we're focusing on load no cost.
Very good. Thank you very much. Thank you for giving all your information to David and to Boris and we appreciate your effort.
Mr. Chairman, before we move on, making an addition to more recognition, found out today that Ms. Fates is a regional finalist for teacher of the year in our region, so yeah. Any other recognition that, um-
You just missed that, but very good.
Just starting to go beyond my scope.
Later in our agenda, we have a claim of Phil Price concerning National Utilities Refund. We talked utilities, is Mr. Bryson, is he outside?
Mr. Chairman, he was here and he asked me if he needed to be here for that discussion. I told him I didn't really feel like to be at it.
So he's not here, so I'll keep him. What's, what's, what's that?
But I, you know, we could go ahead and look forward to interhanding the bridge with Phil Price and if that's what the board would like to do. And I really see no reason why to intervene in that group. Well, what Mr. Conway has pointed out, we have some opportunities to make up some cost savings, but if, if Mr. Bryson's able to-
Pretty entertaining, I offered that agreement as well and it's, it's, uh, we now have the same agreement they have with the county. I really see no reason why to intervene there.
I make a motion to, um, to urge him to bring it for him to, um, continue to look over our energy and no cost. Except for National Utilities.
I have a motion, there is a second. I think I got that. All in favor, see nothing I say, and I? Opposed, some of the, the, the. Next, moving into, Mr. Chairman, is there any, is there a list out there for public comment? Is it on the podium there, please? No follow-ups, everyone. This has been an unusual night for a presentation. We have to calm, I think we have to calm step me down here just a second. Um, actually, I only have one signed up, that's Darlene. What we'll do, ladies and gentlemen, afterwards, if you didn't know, we have this, we will recognize you, we'll give you a chance to speak after the one we have. If you have anything you want to address the board about, so it just calls you to sign the sheet, doesn't mean we won't listen to you, okay? So we'll give you the opportunity. Darlene, please, you're on, you're on the floor.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, the state of North Carolina has turned its back on education. As you're aware, for the last five years, our salaries have been frozen with the meter one point two percent raise for the two thousand twelve thirteen school year. And that increase was based on the same salary we've had since the two thousand eight, two thousand nine school year, when the salary freeze went into effect. Cost of living has raised thirteen point four percent since two thousand eight. We are the teachers and assistants living on less than we were five years ago in reality. We rank forty-six in pay in the U.S., forty-four in per pupil spending, and that should matter to you because that is a direct reflection on how important education is to North Carolina citizens. Repeatedly, we have absorbed teacher positions to increase class sizes with less assistance every year with the same expectations from you and the state for student achievement, knowing full well that smaller class sizes equal higher achievement for our students. This year alone, we absorbed fourteen teacher positions and eight assistant positions. Monetary savings over the last five years, conservatively, could be over a million dollars what we have saved by absorbing these positions. Concerning that current services will be maintained, you have little to worry about that. Even the United States government acknowledges that teachers spend their own money to provide services in the classroom by allowing teachers to claim a tax deduction. The teachers and assistants supporting students in Macon County. We are in the classroom every day, hands-on, for and in the best interest of our students. I implore you to support your teachers and your assistants. Do not take away our two percent supplement, which we desperately need. Thank you.
Anyone else would like to address the board?
My name is Dan Cole, I'm a teacher at South Macon Elementary. And first of all, I'd like to really show my appreciation to the, to the board for working through this very difficult, uh, budget process that was getting handed down from the state and priorities y'all are making to, to keep our kids first and foremost. I'd also like to thank our, our county, our county commissioners who have supported us, uh, the majority of our commissioners. And about this particular, about the supplement, um, I, I moved here from Texas in two thousand six, I came to a, um, uh, some sort of a job fair, I think it was in Anka. And at the time, um, it was, uh, Bunkham County was giving like a ten thousand dollar bonus sign up, uh, and we're looking at Transplanting County, some other things, but, uh, looking at the two percent and also the community, um, I mean, we, we love it here. But that was one of the things I'd keep in mind is every Christmas, you know, it's my commitment to my family to travel with my daughters, as you can see, her grandparents and cousins and aunts, uncles, uh, and every Christmas, and, and we really do count on that, that two percent bonus right before Christmas to make that happen. But thank you.
Well, I would like to put a personal face to the remarks that Darlene Fonmet made.
Sorry, can you introduce yourself?
I'm Jennifer Baldwin, I'm a kindergarten teacher at East Franklin Elementary School. Um, this is my fifteenth year, I am, I worked really hard and got a master's degree. And I just wanted to say that my husband, like a lot of husbands, lost his job, um, in the recession and we were trying to live on my salary and it was extremely difficult. I didn't realize just how little money I made until I applied for my children to get free and reduced lunch. And I just think it's a shame in this county that a teacher who's taught fifteen years with a master's degree, their kids qualify for free lunch and I'm, you know, not the only person in that situation. We have seen the mothers and that kind of thing. And it really is difficult and please remember that that was my Santa Claus money for my children when my husband lost his job. And so, you know, please keep in mind that we really do need this money. It really does make a difference for families.
If not, we will move on then into our regular session, into our regular meeting. However, with, with the permission of the board, I'd like to move the supplement discussion up. If you notice on our agenda, we had it, I think, in, under Business and Finance, we had it there with Angie to talk about the supplement discussions. Since we have everyone here, whatever, at least the city board, I'd like to move that forward and let's have our discussion about that at this point in time. And bringing consent forward, that doesn't mean everyone's approval. Okay. Okay, by the way, this won't have to listen to Mr. DeVille pound me on this anymore either after tonight, so it'll be very good, shall we say? Dr. Baldwin, I'm gonna turn it over to you and to Angie.
Angie, uh, could you just tell us where we are in terms of our finances at this point?
Well, I put a printout in your folders of the board summary and we were actually ran payroll today for October, so we should be sitting at about thirty percent, or about thirty-two percent actually, and we're at thirty-five on the low floor, I think. So as of right now, we're in pretty good shape. We chopped off all the oil tanks, so that was our big expenditure to get us through the winter. Hopefully it'll get us through, but we don't know what's gonna happen, of course, but there'll be probably another load to go to Anaheim and another load to go to Highlands, but the elementary school should be in good shape, I think. Um, so I feel pretty good about where we're at right now at this time. I did run some numbers today and if we were to give the supplement right now with the current employees that we have, for the teachers and the assistants, that total would be just a little over three hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars.
As Ms. Promet pointed out, we have made several decisions, difficult decisions over the past year, uh, in order to save, uh, costs and to improve, improve our budget situation. In addition to fourteen teaching positions and a number of teacher assistants that she pointed out, we've also lost two administrative positions, East Frank, or Alder Valley, Carte VJ, as well as absorbing two positions here at the central office and an additional position will be absorbed on November the first here at the central office as well. So we've made several cost and budget saving decisions with the supplement in mind, because we know how important the supplement is to teachers, we know the county commissioners desire this, that supplement to go to teachers and it's also the board's desire for that supplement to go to teachers. So we've, we've done all that we can or as much as we can to protect that supplement. At this point, as Angie pointed out, we do feel comfortable with where we are. However, there are still some, we do have at least half a year ago, spring semester, we don't know exactly what uncertainties that part of school here brings. At this point, I'm comfortable with recommending that the board go ahead and pay at least one percent of the supplement at this time and then hopefully be able to pay the additional one percent sometime in the spring of two thousand and fourteen.
Make it into a motion with the board to put one percent on the teacher's supplement at this time. We'll have, we've got a motion, let's see, we have a second. At this time, we'll...
I'm going to try to do all these cuts to make this happen, and I would like to go with the 1%, but then after hearing some of it, I'm a little concerned about if they need that money, and I guess I have, gonna, say, step out on faith a little bit here and say, you're going to do such a good job that we're going to have that money for them in the spring, and I know that's tough, but just hearing them say that, I'm just a little concerned.
I understand, and I appreciate your faith in our ability to make the spring semester, and, um, you know...
What if we don't? I'm thinking, I'll go back and thank the county commissioners.
If we don't, we'll have to go back to county commissioners, and that, that supplement they've given us to use at our discretion, if we need it, if we go on an attempt, we'll have to rely on them in our ability to come through if we need it.
But I, I can't help but think that they are such proponents of our education, I think that they would understand and try to help us, and I'm not trying to put that level on me now, but I know, I'm going to take my children somewhere, I'm concerned, what if I, what if my decision, and with them, with their children, I'm just concerned, I'm not, I, I have total respect for what Angie is thinking, but I just have a little concern of making it 1%, and making that check a little small, I don't know exactly even how it goes out, but sometimes when you have a check a little bit in a bigger portion, you're able to do something with it a little, I, I don't know, I don't even have that exactly, but...
And then tend to go back to that, you know, we have a certain degree of confidence that we will be able to, to provide the 1%, the additional 1% in the spring, but we can't make any promises at this point that we won't, you know, place some sort of emergency or something this spring that would require us to use that 1%, possibly do it with the county commissioners in addition to that 1%, so, um, that's our position at this point, and we're certainly going to go with it, uh, the board decides.
Well, and I, I mean, I'm only one vote, but I guess I'm looking at it this way, too. Our, our, our state of North Carolina is continuing to fail us, and I feel like, for me personally, I have to, I have to, oh, these teachers are doing great things, I know with my children...
And that's a good point, Ms. Baldwin pointed out, that, um, in this county, that, um, she has to apply for free and reduced lunch, but that's true all in the state of North Carolina, that's not, that's not new to just Macon County, that's a good point.
So I, I'm frustrated with the state of North Carolina, so, uh, uh, having said that, you know, and some, and I don't know, we don't usually go back and forth, so the teachers might be saying, maybe it doesn't matter, we can do the 1% here and there, I, I'm just thinking how I deal with budgets, sometimes it's just easier to get that money at once, and, again, I'm not trying to disrespect what you and Angie are coming up with in any form or fashion, because I have the utmost respect for what y'all are doing, and I'm just concerned of how, I'm concerned about how the state's teaching, treating our teachers, and I don't want to be a part of it, I feel like...
Obviously, if, if we were up to Angie and I, we would go ahead and pay the 2% now, um, and also not have to worry about the spring, but in the position we're in, we do have to consider what might happen in the spring, and that's the only reason that we, uh, we recognize that we hold on to 1% for in the spring.
I know, I agree, because you are, you are extremely, um, um, supportive of our teachers, and I'm not trying to say that, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just in that outer conversation and all.
I'm going to call mine, I was on board when we got this 2%, we fought for it, it was hard to get even then, we looked at the surrounding counties, most of them were getting a lot more than we did, and we felt, you know, anything was better than nothing, I guess, and now we're sort of slapping some face thinking that way. I feel like I've been left down, you know, 10 years, it's not anybody's fault, probably except the state, but, uh, to be found for something, you hate to give it up, and we may not be giving it up, exactly, you know, that's the thing about it, but, I, I don't know, I just, I'm like her, it's, uh, it's a hard thing to swallow, I think.
Angie, I'd like to ask you to repeat one thing for me. You made the statement, I'll make sure I understood what you were saying. Where, in relation to where we should be, you said normally we'd be at 32, and we're slightly ahead of that now, is that right? We're behind, I guess, behind?
We're four months into the year.
Well, it's the year we should be at 32%, we're actually at 35.
Yes.
So we're actually, to the bad side, we're ahead, we're, we're...
A little bit, but we have went ahead, and we've topped off all the oil tanks, which was a pretty big expenditure for us, so that's paid for, and that's payroll done as of October, everything's completed as of the end of October.
And I'm the first to admit, it's easier for me to say this, because Angie and Dr. Baldwin have to deal with this, I don't have to deal with it the way you do, I mean, I still have, I'm part of it, but it is different for me, so I, I, I just want to say that, I know that, because I am not, I am not trying to second guess you here.
And I appreciate that, that, and, and, I think, uh, if we give the 2% to the teachers right now, then obviously, my heart goes in that direction anyway, but at the same time, I can't tell you for sure what's going to happen this spring, and what we may need to do in terms of our budget in the spring, if we go ahead and give the full supplement now, in the few months that we have in the spring.
Neither of us can promise you that I'll be going to go, we'll keep the county commissioners. Why?
I don't think we're going to send the kids home, so...
Give others comments.
What? Well, my question is, I mean, if, if we gave them the 2% now, and, um, what, what would it be, what would be, um, like a disaster that could happen, like, have to have more, I, I don't understa, I mean, what, what could happen, do you think that, or it could be 32%, it could be negative 20 in Highlands, Carolina, and that would, that would hurt us, I mean, if there's, I mean, the roof could fall, I just...
Not a disaster, I'll ask that, sorry to interrupt, but the teachers would prefer the little we had, or is that cold?
That's what I was going to say, you're all...
Yeah, if we have that, even though we've talked it off, we very easily, if we have a win like we had two years ago, we could come back and have to spend as much as we've already had, or that much again.
Have a border go out.
A border goes out, those type of things.
I personally know what it's like to live with us at Christmas.
Yes, we do, don't we?
I've lost that, too, and I'm not really raising my time, so I don't know how you feel, and...
I think we have to look a little bit, kick the can a little further down the road, um, we've got to look at personnel and programs that you, that we may have to go back into in order to regain the money. If you give up 2% now, if they only give up 1%, uh, you've got a little leeway, but they've got a little 1%, but if you choose to give up the whole 2%, I'd hate for, come around March, you've got to look at programs and people again, that's their livelihood, and say, sorry, you're going to have to go home, or we're going to have to cut this program. So that's where my, I understand what you're saying, but down the road, I just want to protect the program and people, for, at least for this year, I just don't want something to happen in March, that we have to look at and say, I'm sorry, we're going to have to, in order to get the monies back in, we have to take your program out, or we have to let people go home.
Especially considering we are still going to protect that 1% if we do decide to go for a supplement, and that would be our goal, I have that 1% to the teachers, that's something, 2013, we're going to split it.
And I, and I think it's been alluded to up here, the county commissioners are definitely, um, they, they just don't want this, uh, they want you to have it, just like we want you to have it, but I think we have to be careful on how we spend money as we go through, and, you know, if we get a 1% increment, I think that's a good safety to the county that we're trying to, uh, maintain, uh, at least the business of schools, programs, and teachers, and if you say, well, we'll just go back to the county if an emergency comes in.
You know, I don't know, let me say this, and then I'll shut up. This, this is almost like, uh, uh, the ABC money or the lottery, you know, we take this money for a purpose, and all of a sudden now it's being used for something else. Lottery's the same way, uh, it was there for schools, and now it's been used for everything except, same way with this. That might say my place.
The end discussion time will open up, like I said, we had a motion that died due to lack of a second, so at this point, I think I'm following proper rubber rules here, Mr. Chairman, not ahead of the line. I will now open up the floor for any other motion that the board member would like to bring and put forward this time.
Well, I'm going to step out on faith, and, and I know I'm making this a somewhat emotional motion, but, um, I am going to make a motion that we, and, and, and the money to me is somewhat minimal, and the huge, and huge, when you do that, I guess, November, I said November, as you usually do.
I have a motion that we award the 2% supplement in the coming months, which would be November, do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion second as far as the supplement, so what we'll do is, I will take a voice vote on this, just to make sure we know where we're at, so, the motion is to pay the full 2% supplement in November. All those, anybody ever seen if I say an aye?
Aye.
Can you, all those close? Motion carries.
Thank you. Directors of Administration.
Mr. President?
You have to clarify Directors of Administration and all that.
I'm sorry. Teacher, this is, teachers, that's all that the board, that's all the county commissioners have ever funded, um, principals, most principals and assistants, directors, assistant principals are not part of this, uh, at this time, and we definitely, you know, have been, really not seen how we can pay at this point, since that's come out of our fund balance, but there's really nobody actively going to be able to do that at this point, and so, we have expenses, we did give the full 2%, I wanted to give the full 2% to teachers this time.
Can I, Dr. Baldwin, ask you a question, Angie? I think, I may be, I may be plagiarizing what Ms. Promet said, based on the current level of teachers we have, if we're doing it to teachers and teacher assistants, that would be at what figure?
Right at $400,000, the 2%.
2%, he said 3...
399, 209.
And the commissioners actually had set aside what figure for that?
I think it was 4, I think it was 435.
2%.
But they actually only give us what we spend.
Okay.
They, they, they make sure that the teachers, they go through the, uh, by line of how much the teacher has paid.
I guess my question is, is, and this is something to throw out before the board, that's the amount, 435 was the amount that had been both set aside, is there any objection to allowing Dr. Baldwin to ask the question, that if we, since we're spending less than that amount, to do our, making sure all teachers and teacher assistants are taken care of first, please understand what I'm saying, that we then see if they'd be willing to allow the other monitors to be used to extend that supplement to other personnel? Is there any disapproval to that or dissension? There's a reason we cannot do that?
Well, they, they just will not refund us money for principals, assistant principals, or directors.
In the past, they haven't.
No.
We have not asked them to do that, is that correct? Now, I guess my question is...
Not that I'm aware of.
There's nothing with, there's nothing wrong with asking, all they can do is say no, folks.
So what, what you're saying is, the $36,000, did we ever make it? Did we lose it?
At this point, we would, because we can only do the 2% based on the teachers that Angie will give the list of, all registered, so we're basically 36,000 less than what the line of them says, so my comment to y'all is, do we, in light of, Darlene did very, very well, everybody can use the money at this point, trust me, we, we totally understand that, based on, um, let's not look for sympathy, but what the list has said, I know in the private sector, there are those of us, we've been like six or seven years without any type of raise, so, trust me, I know how to get us a wallet. My question is, is that, well, we've never done it before, I'm asking the board, would you all consider asking the county to extend that money to us, and we've decided to be able to spread the wealth, so to speak, to other personnel, be it principals or whoever we deem as being appropriate or deserving of receiving those additional funds?
Can you carry it forward and to use it like we're going to do with that 1%, put that 36,000 up here in a little place, uh, so if you do have this emergency situation?
The county never has paid the whole chunk of what they set aside for the supplement, it's 2% or 3%.
They will reimburse us for what we paid out, and then they'll re-appropriate what's left over in the budget somewhere.
So you just basically lose the 36,000.
Unless we talk to them, they agree to do it.
But right now, we'd be losing 36,000.
We know what, uh, 2%...
Yes, the Directors, Principals, and Assistant Principals total 48,8, 48,8.
You going to pay? No. We'll have some more discussion about, as far as, if, and I hate to say it this way, does that include everyone, I have some, I personally have some issues with how that money would be put out in terms of who all it would go to, because we prefer that, I hope that's not misinterpreted, it probably will be. Um, that's just a suggestion I had, I mean, there's nothing, there's nothing, you know, what's wrong with asking, so I'll put that up to the board, that y'all make your determination.
Well, I know that, in regards to that thing, Mr. Chairman, that, uh, this past school year, we saw two administrators in our school year leave, for other reasons other than just money, obviously, but at the same time, they did leave, and received sizable pay increases as a result of leaving, and, and, and one, at least one case, they left an administrative position in our district for a guidance position in another state, and received a sizable pay increase, so, anything we can do to help, uh, principals out, uh, who, who in most cases are, are paying, earning at, at about the same level that they would as a teacher, except that they are paid for the additional monthly support.
I made a suggestion, I'll open, only if, if there's a motion, that effect will move forward, if not, we'll move on to the rest of the agenda.
I would just make a motion that we put it into Dr. Baldwin's hands to, to inquire about it, and give his reasons, and...
Also, can you give them a rest shot?
So that's a motion, and a motion, I'll second. A motion and second, we authorize Dr. Baldwin to approach the county commissioners about possibly using the remainder of what they had set aside on the items to use for bonuses to other personnel, which we will decide, which we will then make decisions in terms of, you have a discussion?
That would be the session, pass, or...
No, we say an other personnel.
It would be, it would be our discussion, our decision, we'll ask for it, and we'll make decisions ourselves in terms of who that would go to at the fourth, if, if totally we can do that.
Just make it three areas.
Very possible, right. Any other questions? If not, all in favor, someone say an aye? Can you oppose? So moved. Thank you all for your patience, this has been a long meeting, we'll, uh, you're welcome to stay, I think some of you came just to your kind of what areas you want to leave, feel free to do so, otherwise you're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, which will, we can take a little while, you know, reset. And what we'll do, just, so we're not everybody, we're going to take this about a three or four minute break ourselves, so, hopefully, this time, I'll, recess, say five minutes, get it on the screen. Okay, next on the agenda is our consent agenda, all the board members have a chance to review this prior to the meeting, are there any questions?
Um, on the coaching, can you confirm on the coaching, like, um, like, um, Bobby Bishop has got JB, and he's also assistant in, um, RCB team, like, it didn't...
In speaking with, uh, Coach Brooks, he said that they would both be coaching, both JB and Bobby, I think that what they're going to try to do is practice together.
Oh, awesome, thank you so much, yeah.
Any other questions?
And then we're still, um, Highlands is still up in the air about a middle school assistant basketball, is that correct?
And as soon as Coach gets that to me, Coach Lane gets it to me.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Any other questions? If not, there are good motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I have a motion, say, all in favor, someone say an aye? Can you oppose? So moved. Very good.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I had, um...
Next was, I think, against personnel.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Board.
Francis McIntyre Bishop be also added to the agenda as substitute teachers of Macon County.
We'll need to do that as a separate motion, correct, Mr. Angie? Okay. We may have to add, uh, Francis McIntyre Bishop to, on to our agenda and to be approved as an assistant teacher.
As a sub.
I mean, a sub, a sub, that's right, I said that, a sub, a sub.
Have a motion, second.
There is a second.
Second.
I have two seconds, that's all I have to make a use, all in favor, someone say an aye? Can you oppose? So moved.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Anything else, Mr. Board, personnel?
No, sir, not this one.
Okay. Except for, under that... Except for, under that, I think this is now coming over to Dr. Baldwin for your discussion on, well, not discussion, information concerning tenure. And the wonderful thing, our legislature is trying to put off on us, which is called identifying 25% of our teachers. So, yours?
Just, Chairman, we all know, Senate Bill 361 has a field general statute, 115C-135, with career status for teachers. Certains are charged with reviewing the evaluations of all career teachers, or teachers who have worked in the district for at least three years. And recommending 25% of those teachers for a $5,000 raise over four years and a four contract, a four-year contract, if those teachers are willing to exchange that contract for their career status rights. We're all clear on that, and I'm grateful that at least some of our teachers are getting some type of raise from the state. But I'm concerned about the selection process. Right now, we have around 278 teachers who have at least three years of experience in our district. That means we're going to be identifying 69 of those for the $5,000 raise over four years. The only thing that the legislator, legislator, legislator has said that we must go by is the evaluations of performance of those teachers. We're not going to be able to identify 25% of our best teachers based on evaluations of performance alone. So we're going to have to have a period. I'm also concerned about the fact that we're going to identify 69 teachers. And we're going to leave 210, or this legislation, we're going to leave 210 teachers out in the college with nothing. No type of pay increase, and we're not going to have any way of explaining to those 210 teachers why they're not part of the 69 that did get the raise. What I, in the conversations I've had with all the board members and other principals, it's clear that we all want some form of teacher input in the development process of identifying the criteria that we want to use to at least come to some sort of agreement with this 25%. And basically, all I'd like to do at this point with the board is seek your approval to begin the process of identifying some way to solicit teacher input in this process.
Yeah. This, thing is, you're going to have to explain it, not, you know, you don't have to, I guess, have meetings with these teachers or whatever.
Well, what I'll, what I'll begin doing is, tomorrow we have a principal meeting. We'll begin the discussion about ways that we possibly solicit teacher input. And, you know, there are several ways we could, I could do it by email, through our school improvement team. There are a lot of things that we can consider. Basically, all I want to do now is just seek your approval to begin, look into ways to solicit teacher input.
My question?
Mine too.
Well, certainly. This is probably, this is probably going to be, kind of, the words I want to use. I'm not sure if I can, well, I can't use them. Some of them would be a little bit bad, but... This is, this is absolutely the worst thing I've, I think, in my career as being a school worker, or I've ever faced with. And just find it inconceivable that this would be something like this we come up with. And so be it. As we said, it's law. He's going to keep on his head. I think he knows I asked about how we're going to go, and that's where we're going to go to.
And, you know, Mr. Chairman, as we discussed, we had considered whether or not we should just try to say no and find out who, you know, what arm of the state has the authority to compel the board to do this. But you, I think your best answer is you're a law-abiding board first and foremost, and you're going to follow what the law tells you to do. And unfortunately, hopefully, to be saved by some sort of repeal or modification in the short session. You're instructed to do this, and your superintendent is. And so we're going to try to make the best out of a bad situation.
I have been meeting with school improvement team, and just discussing the situation that we have with the selection of this 25%. We've had several discussions about the difficulties of comparing the performance of an elementary school teacher to the performance of a high school teacher. Comparing the performance of an alternative school teacher to the performance of an early college teacher. And all those cases, we're comparing apples to oranges, but all of those folks are doing an outstanding job. And to look at one of them and tell them that they are deserving of a $5,000 raise over four years, and then looking at another one and telling them that they are not worthy of that raise, I just don't see how we're going to be able to do that in any way that's fair. But we're certainly going to do our best to abide by the law and deal with what happens as a result of that.
Enough said about unpleasant subjects, of course, I'm concerned. So I guess you have our blessing, because I like working with unripe paths. I think the more input we get from those that affects is the best that we can possibly do with such a... Anything else, any other board members? No, we'll move on. Moving on to policy, this is where we approve each and every one we have at the same time, not make a difference. We're going to apologize, Mr. Judd, we prepare when it comes due. We'll talk about, I think you've got five, we'll hit all five at a run, approve them all in mass, that's all I have with you. First, Cardigan J., Mr. Lynch.
Okay, on behalf of Cardigan J.'s PTO, I would like to request board approval for a few upcoming events. I apologize, there are three on there that I did not, it's just my oversight. I did not put on before they actually occurred. I thought my PTO board had done that, and there was like a little miscommunication there. One was a Schwan's catalog order. We already had Zaxby's Night. And then the book fair, PTO usually hosts our book fair, and that was this past week. However, the two upcoming ones, December 13th, it's family night. They'll be involved in making gingerbread houses, $10 per family. That will include supplies, pizza, and drinks. It'll run from about 6:00 to 8:30. And in regards to the supplies, PTO will be able to make about $2 per family in regard to that, which will go for beautification, a few repairs, as well as safety. Those are the three goals that PTO wanted to look at this upcoming year. The other night that they're wanting to do and sponsor is a teacher night, which is January 14th. 25% of the total sales during that three-hour time span would also go to the PTO. So I truly apologize for those first three that I just kind of slipped in there, but I'm asking for approval on those last two from the board.
I'll make a motion to approve the past and present...
All in favor, someone say an aye? Any opposed? So moved.
We'll give you a year.
You give you a year, okay. I appreciate our... He's Franklin, he'll be PTO fundraiser.
Okay, first of all, we'd like to have a, excuse me, let me go down to the Santa Shop. And they want to have a three-day, for the kids to go in and just buy a little gift for their parents or themselves, whatever, and wrap them. We're not going to make a lot of money off of this, anything. It's mainly for the kids. And then the next one is a Veterans Night music program. We want to sell pizza dinner, and we're going to have a little program with our students. That's the two fundraisers.
I make a motion to approve the two above fundraisers.
A motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Facebook.
Okay, now, this is, they want to have a Facebook that will only be used to keep parents informed of upcoming school events. It will not include any kind of pictures of any students. The page will be managed by Ms. Brooke Keener, first grade teacher at our school.
Mr. Burl.
I don't see any problem with him doing that. The PTO is managing that page. Any picture of students or anything there, just be used for notifications. I don't see any issue with him doing that.
They need to be careful with that part about the student pictures, because students at that age, it's not even a choice. They can't.
No pictures at all.
So any other concerns? John, do you have any other concerns?
No, generally, I think it's okay. There's a federal law, you know, it's, we looked at this when, when read online, started. Under a certain age, or something 13, they can't, right. There's not even a system, there's not even a system to have teachers opt in, to have their student photos.
Because they'll invite us to an event, and we have a Facebook page.
I think the way that, that's, I think the way it reads is, we, we send out a form every year, begin the year.
We don't think they should do this, kids.
That allows the parents to opt out of having any pictures or anything of their kids. They can post directory information for pictures of students that do not directly identify the children. But that's it. It'll be a group shot, not any individual student or anything like that.
We don't do it.
So that's, that's kind of where you...
So now we get invited to things that are under six, like third grade pizza party. And we'll take pictures of them, and we'll put it on our Facebook page. We know the students don't take photos of them, and those don't go on our, on our Facebook page.
Probably shouldn't identify those classes.
We don't. We don't.
I ain't afraid to thank Brooke, she isn't believable.
Probably the best way to communicate, we take the parents back now.
Your sentence will be managed, and I'm, I'm being fussy here, people.
Okay.
Your sentence will be managed by one of our teachers, who is Brooke. And, and that is understood, that will be how it's going to be. Is that right?
That's right. And it's just, they're just going to talk about the events that we have, and things like that. There will be no pictures whatsoever, and no, I guess, we're having a conversation with parents. Will be on the right?
Yes. Yes.
Please understand my concern. As long as we've got some input on it, being linked to schools, I have no problem whatsoever with it. However, I would have a problem if it is then passed into the hands of someone outside of our school system. And we're endorsing that at that point. And I would ask that y'all come back to us, because I don't think I would go along with that.
Yeah, it's just going to be Brooke Keener.
So as long as it's one of our teachers, and as of now, it's Brooke Keener.
Right. Please understand, if that changes, I'm asking y'all to bring it back to us.
Right, okay.
All right. Here are a motion to approve Facebook. PTO, here your mixed motion, first. There are a second. All in favor, someone say an aye? Any opposed? So moved. Thank you, ladies, for your work.
Thank you.
Men's basketball fundraiser, Mr. Woody.
Mr. Chairman, I've got, actually, two. I didn't get wind of town for a night, that's my fault there. The first one is going to be for the men's basketball program. They're going to be going from November 4th to 30th, they're going to be selling some tennis apparel and garbage bags. Second one is from Ken Offen, for the yearbook. They're going to do a one-night raffle, a basketball game. It's going to be from 7:39 on our, our next home football game.
I make a motion to...
Ken Offen, for your book.
Okay, like I loved what you said.
Probably going to make, I think it's going to be a thousand dollars or less, like they're...
Well, they're going to rat them.
Wait, it's quick, right.
Make a motion to...
A motion, there is, all, a motion, say, all in favor? Any opposed? So moved. Mr. Chatter.
Let's see. Freshman, class fundraiser, selling blow and roast bracelets. Softwood class, and making and selling pizzas, and having a fruit sale. The FACS really isn't selling anything, they're just making baked goods for the hometown day, and put them in competition and contest during the hometown day. The high school cheerleaders are selling spirit bottles, shirts, condoms, et cetera. And the middle school government association, it's not a fundraiser per se, it's getting donations for the cashier's house humane society. Is that fascinating?
That was good.
I make a motion to approve above fundraisers and donations.
A motion is second, approve all requests. All in favor, someone say an aye? Any opposed? So moved. Early, make an early college, Mr. Gibbs here?
Two of us.
Okay, all right.
Okay, we would like to do a yard sale where we just ran out the booths. Students aren't involved, just the PTO is going to run out the booths for like $20. Mr. Sixton in town, if he could use his property. 100% of that money from the families will go to support our kids that want to go to Washington DC, but can't do it. And all of these are for that, but we're just going to split it. We're not going to say this kid raised $10, this kid raised $100.
Put it into plumbing tools, but for those, so students, students will be taking part.
In some days, not in the yard sale. Like the yard sale thing, they will have several fundraiser requests. The cookie dough sales, students will take part in that, but we're going to encourage that they, you know, they don't go, they just ask family members that they know and neighbors. Not encouraging indoor door.
What, we need more names for that?
Angie Templeton, oh, sorry about that. And co-president of PD, if that matters. And we would like to do about some bake sales sometimes also. Do you need specific dates for those, or can we get general approval for them?
I think we probably need those dates, just in the...
Okay, so, just send the dates in when we, when we get those, just have Mr. Gibbs send the dates in?
Just have Mr. Gibbs send them in, I think we're making, put them on the agenda very quickly, we'll approve those. We'll need to get formal approval of the dates, and so...
Well, the first one would be, we wanted to do on November 8th, the day that we're going to do the yard sale. We want to have a booth there to do the bake sale on that day. So we got to do that one thing we want to do.
Guys, I'm not being picky.
That's okay.
I guess what I'm asking on that, will students actually be having on the yard sale?
No.
They won't be actually having their own table, and doing anything where they're participating, or you're selling spaces, am I understanding right?
Right, we're just selling spaces. I don't think any student will participate. Like, if students' parents want to purchase a table, up for this to sell, well...
Thank you.
And, 55% of the sales, the cookie dough goes straight to profit. I didn't, I don't have any information on it. And the bake sale, 100% of the road was a trip. And the 50-50 raffle, we'd like to do, that's 50%.
I make a motion to approve these fundraisers to, for kids to attend the Washington DC trip.
A motion or a second? All in favor, someone say an aye? Any opposed? Any opposed? So moved. Key Club? Yes, sir.
My name is...
There you go.
My name is Noah Miller. I'm the president of Lincoln University Key Club. We are wanting to go into the community and request donations for the Eliminate Project, which is a program run by UNICEF, which is the United Nations Children's Fund, and is a grant is international. It's something done with key clubs across the world. We try to raise money for it to vaccinate mothers and children from maternal and neonatal tetanus, which, even though there's a vaccine for tetanus, and it's entirely preventable, a lot of people in developing countries, for example, still suffer from it heavily. And there's a newborn every nine minutes who dies from this disease. So we want to go on Halloween and go door-to-door, much as we would for trick-or-treating, but instead of asking for candy, we would ask for donations. And it would just be a simple fundraiser for us to give donations. And we give out these boxes to each of our members, and instead of, whenever they go trick-or-treating with their family or whatever, instead of for candy, they give donations.
I mean, I love trying to make money, but we endorse students going door-to-door, but that's how frank a huge...
I'm looking back at the policy right, as we speak. What's in the policy is that donations to the schools are encouraged, but the solicitation of contributions monetary or otherwise for the sole purpose of raising funds is discouraged. Does not, I don't read it as forbidden. I think it's just, it does say it's discouraged.
Trick-or-treat UNICEF is something that's done across the nation, and it's something we've done in our school and other schools in the past, and it's not any new thing.
It's a new thing for this, or this county, correct?
Yeah. Well, not for the county, because I know people who have done it in the past, but...
What are you saying, Chris?
It's against our current policy, which you guys use on school system makes sense for... I suppose it is. I, it depends on how you read, it shall not serve as the center for distribution of charitable fundraisers. If, if that's what, if you consider this to be an example of that, then I think our policy does prevent it.
I mean, it's a great idea, young man, no doubt about it, but to get one kid hurt or anything, and we're not...
Was there anything else you were going to be doing along? We have a request that's obviously in conflict with what our policy is saying.
Current policy. Current policy. Since we're definitely advising their policy.
Follow their enthusiasm, but. Ask reservations. There are a motion. Best if we don't have a motion for approval, we'll simply die of lack. Are you a motion? Sorry, thank you for coming for us.
After we, so that's the policy obtained or whatever. Yep. It's certainly in Milton College.
It's certainly. Lincolnville School FCA fundraiser, Mr. Mazin.
We're gonna be doing our usual annual donuts, um, Krispy Kreme donut drive. Um, it's just a good thing, so we're going to, um, I think with our new, I don't think our new lunch lady, new child nutrition director is here, but we're gonna try to supplement lunch as well. But, um, well, it's for the strength to stand youth rally at Gatlinburg, they're gonna try to attain to raise enough money for that. And the Zaxby night, um, those dates are yet to be determined. When we get the dates, we're gonna be going up a certain amount of, let's see, we'll go to the FCA for that night.
Make a motion to approve the fundraisers.
Thank you. Please pass along so we can have a minute as far as the date, Mr. Mazin, if you don't mind.
We'll do it. There's two dates, so we'll give you some to clarify.
All in favor, say my say an aye. Can you oppose? So moved. Uh, color guard program.
Anna Fay, as you know, her, her Sears is her name now, she was just married to our English teacher. Did an internship at the high school, a great lady. She's wanting to start a conjunction with a high school, a middle school color guard. She'd get approval for this, she just wants to make sure, because there is some physical activity in this, that she wanted to bring it to y'all's attention. It's more of a club than anything, but, um, just for safety, just wanted to bring that up.
Any questions? Motion to approve. So moved. You're a second.
Sorry.
Motion say all in favor, say my say an aye. Can you oppose? Very good, thank you, Mr. Mazin. Matt, if you're gonna meet your fundraisers, Mr. Sutton's not here, I think. First is Washington DC, Ms. Breedlove.
I'm here representing Mountain View for the, um, both of the fundraisers listed. Um, for Washington DC, we, the board approved the list that we had sent at last, last month's meeting. Um, but I failed to put all day to the facts, um, breakfast. And so I wanted to make sure that before we, um, took the action towards that and completing the arrangements. We do have a date, December fourteenth, the second Saturday in December. And, um, that would be another opportunity to provide students to raise money for their trip to Washington DC. We have had several already that have been successful. And so the biggest thing is just as a school, being able to offer that opportunity for students to raise that money that would not be available otherwise. Um, the second fundraiser that Mountain View is wanting to do, the PTO, is the Swan's Food, um, fundraiser. And ten percent of that will come back to the school. And, um, parents or customers who ever purchases items, they will go to a identified location and pick that up on weekend. Um, really, students will just sell the items and then that information will be given to the people that buy items.
Make a motion to approve of, of a fundraiser.
Motion second, all in favor, say my say an aye. Can you oppose? So moved. Thank you.
And there's one more thing listed for Mountain View. Um, that is the use of, um, the hot air balloon for the remakes, um, having a contact, um, with remakes and having the opportunity to have the hot air balloon come to our school where students would be able to, the teachers would really be able to use this element in their heat energy units at the science department in sixth grade. Um, so many, many of our students have never, um, been near a hot air balloon, so no students will be going up in the, um, hot air balloon. But, um, this, that would be an added feature of a T E energies unit.
Do you have the space for the, the two hundred or two hundred?
Jennifer Love has, um, she's the one that's been coordinating all the specifics on the location. We do have the states, I know the, at one point they were discussing the space around in front of our school. Um, not in the park in my area, but the, um, the grass that is, as soon as you pull in the Mountain View, that you're looking at there. Um, I know they were going to measure that area to see if that was the location they could, um, put the balloon. Um, I have not heard if that was, the case is not, but I do know that they do know the specific measurements of what, of the space required for that balloon.
I think that was minimum space too, right? Two hundred feet or two hundred feet.
Ms. Love did mention, um, I'm not sure as far as the liability sheet, but that's only for, that was not for students or anything. Um, but the case that we have compressed, we have a big point. Um, and just that she, other than that.
And the certificate that they've given, it, I mean, it looks pretty comprehensive. I think that it looks like they, they, they go into this knowing that you approach a board like this and say, hey, we'd like to send some people up in the air with, you know, a big gas canister. You are gonna tend to wanna know what kinda insurance there is for it. It looks, it looks like decent coverage.
They just say it's gonna be tailored though, right? Think it would not be leaving on the ground?
Yes.
Need about six or seven students to help roll the sheet back up.
The only, um, the only role that students would play, and only a few of them, would be, um, once the balloon was down on the ground, there would be a woman there, um, either unrolling it or rolling it.
Would the other requirement pause to ask, would you go back in the school and do a class?
They, um, yes, once we have gone out to the hot air balloon, um, there will be a program that follows up that experience out and back into classroom and, um, using that experience to follow up to their heat energy.
On education, sir. Say it again, Mike.
I make a motion to, um, accept this, because we have the hot air balloon experience for, but we have to ask.
A motion here, second.
Do we know the date yet? I mean, we've got three dates.
I mean, um, the dates, they're listed, um, most of those dates, the balloon will only be coming one of those days, but we have additional dates listed, um, in case of weather, including the wind.
Second.
Motion second. Any other question? All in favor, say my say an aye. Can you oppose? So moved. Just enter this college contract, Dr. Baldwin.
Uh, this is the contract that we discussed, the court and I discussed regarding to kind of calling. I wanted you to direct me to, um, Sherwood's condition of funding. We've been able to do that to certain degree. She agreed to this contract, rest of the contract, if I ask, so, 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 so.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say my say an aye. Can you oppose? So moved. It's a very important program, ladies and gentlemen. It takes us a lot of children. Transformation contract, Paula.
Yes, this is a contract with a parent to transport a student with disability that cannot ride a bus.
Make a motion to accept this transformation contract.
A motion second, all in favor, say my say an aye.
Aye.
Can you oppose? So moved. Uh, Lenora, VIP C A, C A C E F P contract.
Say that ten times.
Okay.
Um, it's just a request for our, um, C A C E F P contract, which is the B contract that reimburses the after-school program and for us to continue to have child nutrition program, provide those snacks for us. Nothing has changed from last year.
Make a motion to approve, do we just get something up to?
A motion here, second.
Second.
Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, say my say an aye. Can you oppose? So moved. Mr. Henning, revision to board policy four forty-five fundraiser.
Mr. Chairman, just as a refresher, this is the same, uh, as the first reading edition. All this policy change does is remove the practice that we've not been in and don't feel like we need to be in of having all of these compressed in the beginning of the year, request for fundraising events. And also on the second page, it adds a little bit more clarification of the charitable organization part of the policy that says, you may approve it, but if you do, you want the principals to say to you that there's not too many of these going on for the school and not, that it has some educational purpose and, uh, you know, that, that's not encroaching too much on the school day. So that's, that's essentially all this is, and it's, it's pretty.
I think one of the purposes, uh, in the previous, the current, uh, policy is that it puts a lot of pressure on principals to try to determine, uh, which are worthy charitable fundraisers, which aren't. You know, if we, if we read it yourself, um, and we've got another fundraiser, a charity that comes to us and asks us to, our students to be a part of that, then they have to pick and choose, because principals are in a different situation. And also, uh, because our students are in a position of being, who kept working for a lot of these charitable fundraisers, uh, here in the school.
Have you heard that Chris Baldwin, I wrote, make a motion to approve the second reading.
All right, this is what we're at, the second reading, so it's not, not. Any other questions, have a motion for approval, please. Mr. Baldwin's done so. You're here, second.
Second.
Any other discussion, questions? If not, all in favor of the motion, say my say an aye.
Aye.
Can you oppose? So moved. Thank you, John, for your work on that, Dr. Baldwin, I appreciate it very much. Next, Mr. Member on Understanding Southwest Community College, Mr. Moore.
Members of the board and Chairman Breedlove, this is from Curtis Stubble, who is the Dean of the Public Safety Training Center here in Lake, um, here at Southwest Community College. He is requesting that he be allowed to use Coliseum's age of school and the surrounding school ground to train for school scenarios with his law enforcement training classes. He actually went up there with me a couple of weeks ago and then went back again last week. He thinks there are certain parts of the facility that he could use. I also told him that it was for sale and that we could make him a great deal on it. He wasn't as inclined to talk about that. And speaking with, uh, Mr. Henning this afternoon, we would want to make sure though, before we go, go into this agreement, if the board chooses to, to make sure that the proper liability coverage was available. So this is something that they would like to do. We can continue discussion of it, or I guess you could give us a blessing to move forward on it, with appropriate liability insurance in place.
You sell it, they're out of that, right?
That's what I was hoping to do, was, uh, I told him we'd make him a great deal on it, but so far.
It's basically a chance for us to use a facility reduction, that's a return to the community, I think, as a rule. As long as we have the proper liability, we should be sure it's on, it doesn't seem to make sense. There are a motion.
Make a motion, accept.
Remember, you're second.
Second.
A motion second, all in favor, say my say an aye.
Aye.
Can you oppose? So moved, very good.
Mr. Chairman.
School boards, uh, policy updating services, uh, Mr. Henning, Dr. Baldwin.
You can start, um, Mr. Chairman, we have over time found that, sometime back in two thousand and six, I believe it was, when Dr. Yeager was here, the board asked him with reducing, it was a ridiculously voluminous policy manual. And that, you know, there's probably many people around here who had hernias from trying to carry this thing around. It was, it was too much and it had been built up over time. Dr. Yeager called it down to, to more of the bare essentials and it has been since built back up over time. But we, in doing that, we uncoupled ourselves from what we had had up to that point, which was the school boards association policy updating service, where they sort of monitor changes in state and federal law and bring out, bring forward and suggest policy changes as we go along. That has been a continuing worry and, and Moore has said it more than a couple of times to me, and I, and I've seen myself that, that I think it's just too much for any one system to try to keep up with, particularly not of, of this size of this system. So what I would suggest to you, Renee did the legwork on, on how much, uh, a full-on subscription with a new, a full renewal, and this will give you sticker shock, is something like twenty-two thousand nine hundred dollars or something to start from scratch and start over. And I don't really feel like you need that anyway. Your policy manual is not, it's not the worst thing ever. It's just not adapting to change as fast, as fast as it should be. And so.
But to be honest, we've seen more changes than a quick, a faster rate of issue.
Right. I think, and I think that's true. So I, I would recommend to you, they have, uh, the PLS, uh, policies to lead our schools, update service for nine hundred and fifty dollars a year. I think that that would be money extraordinarily well invested to just, from here on out. We'll keep improving our policy manuals, we go all wise to do so, and I would recommend you do that.
So this is just a service that they will, moving forward, we will be informed of policy changes and stay abreast of those current events.
Yes, sir, and I think, I think we're one of maybe two districts in, uh, in the West that's not on at least the updating service.
So it's probably the House is more alone or anybody, if new legislation comes out and John has to develop the policy for that, probably must have a lot of development, people develop that policy.
Athletic drug testing policy costs about two thousand dollars. Just that one policy.
Make a motion, Dr. Baldwin, social policy, policy, yeah, approved.
Second.
So we're specifically saying that we'll be, for policy to lead the schools, second, correct? Never doubt, I guess. A motion, have a second, all in favor, say my say an aye.
Aye.
Can you oppose? So moved. Very good. Union Academy level school options, Mr. Shepherd.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the board, Dr. Baldwin. As an alternative school, Union Academy has afforded the opportunity to devise their own goals, to determine their growth. Uh, there's about eight different categories. Pat Davis could probably give you more information on it, but I'm gonna kind of skim the surface. They range anywhere from attendance, to dropout rate, to customer satisfaction, to those you see in front of you. We met as a staff a few faculty meetings ago, decided we were going to take last year's goals and try to reduce them from their actual numbers. The first one was school safety and student conduct, and basically we decided that the percentages, excuse me, the percentage of students receiving discipline referrals was twenty-three point five percent. And this year we're going to try to decrease that to twenty-two percent. Secondly, in regards to student progress and proficiency, and I'll be the first to admit, I did get the emails from EVOS today, but during our, uh, our faculty meetings today, that we had a union, we were so in tune with the N C E S evaluation system, trying to get up to snuff and up to date on the things we need to do, I haven't looked at it, but I will first thing in the morning. Uh, basically what we want to do is the percentage of middle schoolers making measurable progress, we're trying to increase that by two percent. So if we had sixty-five percent last year that were proficient in math, hopefully we're gonna make that sixty-seven percent. And the same would be for reading. Lastly is community involvement. Uh, last year the number of volunteer contact hours was a hundred and seventy-two point one contact hours, and this year we're shooting for a hundred and seventy-five. So these are the goals for, uh, Union Academy this year.
Very good. Any questions with, with Mr. Shepherd? This is not really something to take action on, is it?
I don't think so.
It's just for informational purposes for the board.
Just a question.
I don't believe it's anything for them to approve, this is just.
It's part of the A B Cs and has to be approved by the school board. Um, they, because it's an alternative school, uh, they're allowed to choose goals and this, they're supposed to meet as a school, um, and choose, and that's what they've done, and so they need your approval, and then it's sent to the, um, accountability department of North Carolina.
Thank you, I was looking for, I would make a motion to approve, um, these goals that you guys have set out. Here's our.
Second.
A motion second. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, say my say an aye. Can you oppose? So moved. Thank you, Mr. Shepherd. Thank you for staying with us.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Discussion items, the new mail updates, Ms. Walter.
Um, yes, um, Dr. Baldwin asked me to discuss with you a little bit about the, um, apparently it came up last month at a board meet, the board meeting, that, um, teacher assistants have been asked to provide their own subs. That was not true. Uh, no teacher assistant had to pay for a sub in their classroom. So that's just a point of information. I did want to tell you though, that since August, we've had a large number of teachers trained in both programs. In, uh, August, we had thirty-one teachers, four teachers. In August, we had 31 teachers, four teacher assistants and five tutors slash subs. People that can substitute that have had the training and come in and take over so that groups don't have to stop when the teacher's out. In October, we trained another 29 teachers, 17 teacher assistants and three more tutor slash subs. And so for this year, we have had 60 teachers, 22 teacher assistants and eight tutors subs total. Which is really good. We're real pleased that so many people now have the training. It does present a little bit of problem for Carrie and Holly because that's a lot more people for them to mentor. And do you need to say anything about support?
Yeah, because our focus this year has been with the On Cloud Nine program, OCN, that we brought on board. So Holly's been primarily focusing on that and certification of new people and recertification. So with the addition of Southmaking and Carteau J coming on pretty strong, that kind of spreads us even thinner. So we are dedicating a day a week to both of those sites. They may not be getting quite the face time that some of the schools did initially when we started the program, but our goal is to get a certified mentor at every site so that they can help support this as we move forward. So we're pleased with the progress at this point. We have over 200.
I think we figured, I figured the other day, 245 total teachers, teacher assistants that have been trained.
In those three programs.
In the three years. Any questions?
And Read to Achieve, be able to create a marriage.
Yeah, I think we're, I think it's going to be a positive for us because right now, we focus on tier two and tier three students. Our tier two students are getting 45 minutes of pullout. Tier three are getting 90 minutes. And Read to Achieve is going to require that 90 minutes of uninterrupted reading instruction for students who did not pass in the third grade.
Well, the people have been trained, most of them in the K3, most of the people have been trained are K3.
It's all over the, it's all over the K6 spectrum, especially in the some at eighth, seventh and eighth grade.
Yeah, we have some at middle school, but yeah, our.
We have more K2 on board this year, which will really help. And most of the third and fourth grade teachers now are trained in every school.
Really moving towards, well, not towards, but really a push on classroom implementation because the sooner we do that whole group at the kindergarten level, as those kids start moving on, you know, by third grade, we're not having to do a lot of direct instruction with the program. It's just the language being used throughout all the content. And we've had a big shot in Armistice, Southmaking this year with ESL students. And we saw a lot of growth with them over the summer school. So we're really trying to focus there because we found with those kids, it's not cognition. It's a vocabulary or language gap. And so we're finding that they make progress very quickly. And you know, the faster they make that progress, then the faster we're going to start to see that back in the classroom and hopefully in the EOG data.
Maybe I'm missing it, but let them tell us this problem is really proving itself. I need numbers. I mean, I thought we made numbers do anything.
We should know pretty, we'll know some when we get our EOG scores for this past year. And then I think for sure we'll know by the end of this school year.
What we are seeing, Mr. Cavett, is like in our DIBELS and TRC, which is the assessments we use for K2, that in classrooms, that we're in schools where we've been for the whole project, like third graders last year, at the end of the year testing on DIBELS and TRC, showing the same streak that at the beginning of fourth grade. So that they're holding in a.
They're not having that same.
Right.
Drop that they've had before.
I think the Read to Achieve and the marriage of the Lindemere Bell, as long as the same language is there. So if you train the teachers, you're going to have to do this anyway.
The Read to Achieve law is actually really nailed down the reason we need this type of professional development because that's one of the stipulations of that law, is that it be strong professional development in instruction and reading and that it provide consistent support so that teachers get very in-depth. And really, I've been in this school system a long time and I have never seen PD that had that kind of component in all my years. And I went to lots of trainings. But we also had a fidelity check the other day and one of the things they were checking on was our PD. Are we, are we doing, and that's professional development for those of you that are not, know all that lingo. But we, we realized that that's the piece that we have not had before. You know, our teachers are going to things, they're coming back and now we require them a lot of times to go to a training and come back and share with the staff. But that is the piece that now we're expected to show with professional development, is to be able to do it. It's going to be a pretty good marriage. And I think you'll see in a few minutes when we do the Read to Achieve slides and let you see a little bit more about the law.
Will it also have the, we have to do that combination retained in fourth grade versus non-retained, that's got a name, transition.
Transition.
What was it?
The transition.
Transition classroom?
Well, that would probably be the focus of a lot of the support, the remediation that they're getting for reading with that 90-minute pullout or dedicated time to remediation.
Let me ask you one question. You said your goal is to have a mentor at each location. How close are we to that?
We have those in process at every school at high.
And really.
My goal was by the end of this year, we need to be self-sustaining.
Right. And that's our goal because to have those mentors in there they can support at the building level. And then Lindemere Bell has also provided the IAB, which are the web trainings that we do for the certified people. So they opened them up this year to anybody who wanted that training. And that was kind of a building level decision just to be a little more independent. So we do have some people participating in this as well. So we're building on, you know, a lot of independence in the schools. And that was our goal because we won't have to sub off partnership next year.
Well, and I feel like these people, new people are being trained. I mean, the people like Carrie, she has been around long enough that she realizes when you can speed things up and when you can slow it down. So it's a learning process for everybody, you know, to work with the teacher and say, you can move on faster than you are or you need to slow down a little bit. You know, that's what the coaching is all about, is looking at just right instruction for kids because that's the best place they learn, is instruction that's just right for them.
And we've had a lot of feedback from teachers, you know, about translating it back into the classroom for those kids that are pulled out. So we've been able to sit down with them and look at TRC and DIBELS data and look specifically at what skills they're weak in and kind of find to that lesson plan and that remediation.
Are you developing a portfolio for some of these students?
Well, that's a, that's a good point, Gladie, so that, because a portfolio is going to be part of what they have to have in this third, fourth grade transition. So that lesson plan, the blue notes, the teachers or group leaders to take notes in there about specific errors or successes in there, and then there's attendance in it. So all of that is the evidence for meeting those goals for those children.
And you have to show evidence of interventions for those children and lesson plans and things like that. And like Carrie said, it's right there. That lesson plan has been, they've written it with Carrie's help and it's there for the evidence. It's just got a lot of pieces. We're very fortunate that we've got something like this in place because this Read to Achieve law, we've set aside money from Title I for that. And that is a big component of making our teachers better teachers, is professional development. And I think we're getting probably the best we've ever had. So I think we're going to reap some benefits out of it. And particularly, I see some schools like East Franklin that have been at it for a couple of years now because they had some very low performing students at that time and they had to do something pretty quick. And they have been able to now, instead of starting out, they, they went through the kit. They've already been through the visualizing, verbalizing, the comprehension part of the kit already since school started. And they're totally in content with.
And that's been our goal with the classroom delivery.
Yeah, to get them out of those boxes.
Earlier, the less we do that box.
Which is not really, it's not a content thing, but it's got the stories for them to work on, you know, to build the children's pictures, strong visualization, so they remember what they've read. Do you have any other questions?
Thank you. New proficiency standards, Dr. Baldwin?
Mr. Chairman, would you have in your pack new proficiency standards for North Carolina? These are also known as the CUT scores. Basically, this tells you the number of questions that a student can miss and still be considered level four, level three, level two, or level one. These scores also represent the first assessment of a new North Carolina standard course of study, which is a more rigorous curriculum and is assessed by more difficult tests. Anytime new proficiency standards are implemented, the bar is set pretty high. In this case, we're seeing the same thing that we expected. With only about 50% of the students across the state being currently proficient in these standards. That's not unusual. That's what other states are seeing at this time. To give you an example, a real life example would be similar to coach, coaching a high jump team where students to jump over a high jump bar. Originally, the bar would be set fairly high. Not many students would get over that bar initially. But as we continue to practice, we expect more and more students to get over the bar. Of course, it's going to be very difficult the first time through. And that's what we're seeing in this case. However, this year, we've got a different set of circumstances to deal with, in particular, the Read to Achieve law, which Carol spoke some about, Mr. Shield referred to as well. The way, if we, if we looked at the way the test was implemented and the way the student scored last year, we could expect only 50% of our students in the third grade would be able to be promoted to the fourth grade based solely on their performance on the end of grade test. Carol's want to discuss more about the Read to Achieve law right now. If the chairman is going with that discussion, I'll refer back to proficiency standards as we move to that discussion.
Thank you, Dr. Baldwin. Any questions, plans of board members? Very good. Move forward. Read to Achieve, Carol?
Okay, we'll make this short because this is about the two or three documents that are on. Tim, do you have that PowerPoint? This is a big document. It's 35 pages long. And there's another one that goes with it that's 65 pages long. So I'm going to give you the short version.
I have this one and this flowchart.
Let's do the other one first and then we'll do the flowchart. It's actually not in there. It's the PowerPoint.
Is that, can that describe the.
We can. I mean, I'll, I'll just kind of walk you through the components. There's a lot of documents that you can pull off the internet and read about Read to Achieve. There's a lot to it. I'm just going to hit the high spots. I'm going to tell you what's part of it and where we are in Macon County with it. The first component is a comprehensive plan for reading achievement. And that says that we, the schools will familiar, excuse me, familiarize the schools and teachers with a plan and use data in professional learning communities to provide, provide appropriate reading instruction for teachers. And so in Macon County, we have scheduled time for both professional development and the professional learning communities. The principals have done that at the school level. And we've also scheduled the professional development through Lindemere Bell training, but also foundations of reading training. But we've had other trainings too, but remember this law focuses mainly on reading. So that's what we'll talk about. Component two says that there will be a developmental screening and kindergarten entry assessment. And that is still in the development process, so we don't really know too much about that part of the law yet. Three is facilitating early grade reading proficiency process. And there's where your assessments come in. That's where our reading 3D that you hear about and the teachers complain a lot about because it takes a lot of time. That's the part of this law that that covers, that the state bought for us. In Macon County, we have everybody trained. We are implementing the assessments. We're progress monitoring after the interventions are delivered. And school improvement teams at schools are setting goals and they can use this data to help set goals for their K3 students. Component four is the one you'll probably hear the most about. That's the elimination of social promotion. And that is one of the parts where the professional development is included for teachers. It says that you will, we will support teachers through professional development in reading instructional strategies. We have to, we're required to develop personal education plans for students that are not on grade level or are at risk of failing. We have to have uninterrupted blocks of time for, and that includes a portfolio on any student that is struggling. And we can talk about the portfolio if you have questions about that. And I've already given you the data on how many teachers we've had that have had professional development. We have something in process. It's not the best in the world, but it's an easy way for us to track our personal education plans for these students throughout their time in elementary school. So that we show that we're doing what we're supposed to do for kids. And it will track the interventions. It will track just about anything. And it also includes another component. Actually, I'll skip over that one. I think that was number six. And that's that you notify parents. So with the PEP process that we have in place, if a child's at risk, the teacher has to call those parents in and talk with them and give them that information so that they know. And a lot of the teachers are meeting with all their kids, whether they are at risk or not, to let the parents know where their children stand. And another part of that notification is that each school has either set up a night to call in the third grade parents and talk to them and explain this to them or they have it planned in the next week. Some schools have done a couple of different ways that they've notified parents. And one way that we're notifying parents is through this meeting tonight, is to give U information and give the general public information. Component five that I skipped a minute ago is successful reading development for retained students. And that's where you go into the steps that you follow in order for a child to pass if they are not, they don't, not proficient at the end of third grade on their reading. And Tim, do you have that flowchart now? There it is. Okay, let's kind of walk through this. A student completes the third grade and takes their EOG for reading. If they pass it, they're proficient, they move on to fourth grade. You can't see the rest of that. But if you go down the yes side, they're promoted. Okay? If no, they don't pass that test, the student qualifies for a good cause exemption. And things like that are, is that, like if they're a limited English proficient student and they've been here less than two years. Or if a student has an IEP that qualifies them for an alternative assessment. And there won't be many exemptions in that category this year. We used to have, well, not exactly exemption, but they could take, more students would be able to take an alternate test. And originally, that, that's not, it's not worded that way anymore. Another way is they can have proficiency on an alternate assessment after the EOG or summer reading camp. Another way is through a reading portfolio and, or if they've been previously retained more than one time. So there are some ways that can be exempted. If they don't have a good cause exemption, then they're re-administered that third grade test. And they can either, if they are proficient, they will go on to fourth grade. If not, they go to summer reading camp. So they're really taking that test twice at the end of the year. And then if they're not proficient there, then they go to summer reading camp. What we know about summer reading camp is that, we don't know how it's funded yet, but we're going to be required to have it and we think it's going to be six weeks long. We don't know how many hours a day it has to be or anything like that. Then after summer reading camp, they can take the Read to Achieve test or they can go to a student, have a student reading portfolio. And that portfolio has guidelines too. The portfolio, let's see if I have it. Is based on 12 reading standards. Is based on 12 reading standards. There's like 10 examples of each standard. A student shows proficiency by passing three passages for each standard, and four out of the five questions have to be correct for that mastery of the passage. Okay. If they pass that, they're considered proficient, and their retention label will be removed. They'll go on to fourth grade. If not, then they'll stay in a third, well, they won't actually stay in a third grade class, they go on to fourth grade, but they will continue to receive instruction in reading in a third, fourth transition classroom, and that's where another 90 minutes of uninterrupted reading comes in. Just thought I'd let you know about that.
This is another example of legislation that will affect our student proficiency. I guess the key thing there in the legislation, this is not an educational policy passed down to us from DPI, this is legislation from the Department of Statistics. And basically, what I want the board and parents to know is that Macon schools just will work diligently to make sure that our students do master the reading curriculum for the third grade and are promoted to the fourth grade in some way where our students will show demonstrated mastery based on the third grade reading curriculum.
Well, and one other component that I neglected is the accountability measures part of it, and what that says is that school systems have to track student information related to demonstrating proficiency. Now, that's not individual student proficiency, but it's proficiency of our school system, like how many, what kind of interventions were used and describing. How many students had to take the test over because they didn't pass it the first time? You know, so it's information that we have to put on our school website. So that's another part of that law.
One concern that I do have is the stigmatization of these third graders who don't pass that third grade EOG on the first try. They're going to be retested possibly off of the summer reading program and possibly retained for at least a portion of the year for their fourth grade year. They will certainly be labeled with stigmatization for as good as possible, but that is a concern.
What about a student like in the third grade in the second year they don't achieve? Are they going to be labeled as incapable of, or, you know, and passed on then?
Well, the way we understand it is by that point in time, the principal will make a decision about what that child will do.
On the second year?
If they've already been held back one year, you can't hold them back.
Well, it says that they can be retained two times.
They can be held back in the third grade for two years?
Well, it's actually, they don't be held back twice in K-3.
K-3. There's one thing I read where it said, that's one of the exemptions, is if a child has already been retained one time, then.
Two times.
Two times. Once before, prior to third grade, end of third grade. That would make two. And that we're getting new information every few days. Diane's continually going to meetings, and every time she comes back, she has more.
At this point, let's go ahead and just real quickly show the board and the media and parents, we'll not leave it out on the front page right up, but what exactly that third grade EOG looks like and what our students are facing.
That would be very good. Dr. Ball, he showed this to us, we're at the meeting, and it's.
This is a public document. Parents can access this on the NCPI's website, under Release Test Forms. This, this first is a sample test item, just to make sure that the students are on the proper test form. If we scroll down, there are six reading selections that a third grader must read and answer questions on. The first reading selection, Claudia's collection, is two and a half pages long for a third grader. Once they complete the reading selection, they've got a number of questions that they've got to answer correctly. And the major point that I'd like to make is that, in addition to being a measure of reading comprehension, it's also a measure of student stamina and ability to focus for a length of time for an eight-year-old. The other thing that I'd like to point out is based on those recently released proficiency standards, a student can only miss eight questions on this exam and still be considered proficient. So if they miss eight of the 44 questions, more than eight of the 44 questions, they will be, make up a score of Level Two and not be promoted to the fourth grade based solely on their performance on this exam. On the back.
There you go.
That's the one, that's the one.
And they're not indigenous to the state of North Carolina. Well, Dewey's Creek, they are.
But as I said, parents, students, teachers can access these release test forms on the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction's website, under Release Test.
On the plus side, when your entire class doesn't pass it, it'll soften the blow of the stigma.
True. Now, I guess on 50%, right now, the state average is 50%. Based on last year's score, it's 50% of our third graders that we consider at the state level proficient in third grade reading. So you're right, 50%. Which way are you with this?
If you don't pass third grade and you go into one of those third, fourth transition classrooms, you can be pretty sure that you're just going to be doing reading math.
Exactly, so we're sacrificing.
There will have to be a lot of, there will have to be a lot of integration with science and social studies because, you know, the 90 minutes of uninterrupted reading time in addition to what we're already doing is a lot.
Still, still say we're ahead of the game, but happen to Lyndon Mubell with the full measure of the tier, the tier process.
Well, and that's one, two, tier three. And that's a good segue into the next portion of the agenda, the EBOs score. We can look and see how well our students and teachers performed last year in terms of academic growth, which is a little different from proficiency. This is a measure of where the students began, began the school year in terms of academic growth, also where they ended up the school year. And as a system, we saw a great deal of growth. As a matter of fact, in many cases, we saw examples of where students and teachers exceeded expected academic growth. It's, you've got to be across several security codes in order to access this. Just real quickly, I'll show you the. You don't know what a black turkey is.
Just toy that a Chris.
He didn't know it. I asked for it. It was all my fault. Okay. This first graph, the blue areas show where our students and teachers exceeded academic growth in the, on the end grade math test at the fourth grade level. We see Cartecky J exceeded, East Franklin met, Highlands exceeded, Hola Valley. Can you see that last? Manahala, and then Southmacon. So blue is exceeded expected growth, green is met academic growth, and red is did not meet expected academic growth. That was for math. Reading, again, blue is exceeded expected growth, green is met academic growth, and red is did not meet expected academic growth. As a school system, as a district, we exceed the expected growth in fourth through eighth grade math and in fourth through eighth grade reading. So our teachers did better than expected, and our students did better than expected. On our end of course exams, green again, in Algebra I, green is met academic growth, red did not meet academic growth, blue exceeded, and green met. So you see that in terms of our district, we met, we exceeded academic growth in Algebra I, Biology, and English II as a district. On the ACT, all of our schools met academic growth on the ACT in all four areas, and on the composite, we exceeded growth in math and science at the high school, Franklin High School, and in math at Highlands. On our common exams, and another reason, actually, this first was the CTE exams, all of our CTE courses are tested. You can see that we did very well on our CTE exam as well as our core subject areas. The common exams that we took in the fall, other than just a couple of areas, we exceeded or met academic growth expectations. That was the fall administration of the common exams. And in the spring, we also did very well. The other thing that I would like to point out as we look at these scores is the sheer number of testing administrations that our students and our teachers deal with on a yearly basis. I mean, our teachers, our, our students are, do not lack for assessment opportunities. Here, now, this upside down. Thanks, Tim.
Could be better. We definitely don't lack for. Moving on. Approve law of Union Academy Air Conditioning. Dr. Ball?
At, at Union Academy, Mr. Shepherd currently has one opportunity to administer this to his high school students, and that is out of school suspension. We're trying to set up an area for him to be able to put students in school suspension. This would require some sort of ventilation system in a room that's off the kitchen area of Union Academy. He needs an HVAC system. David tells me it's going to run about $1,900, and I would like to ask the board to approve these particular funds to heat and accommodation that, that room is worn by students in Union Academy.
I'll make the way to approve Dr. Ball's recommendation.
Any other discussion? Motion is to appropriate $1,900 for my compensation funds to use for capitalizing at Union Academy. All in favor, say a aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. QZF funds, Dr. Ball?
At earlier board meetings, the board has directed me and also David to begin the installation and repair of windows at Franklin High School. We have Avast Davis to hold up on that for a matter of time, because we just, we just learned that QZF funds are available, and we might be able to replace those windows at Franklin High School as well as exterior doors. We might also be able to apply for QZF funding and completely renovate the HVAC system at middle school as well as other energy savings and upgrades that are being carried. There's also, we might be able to complete the rental project at Highlands School through these QZF funds. We would be required to meet with county commissioners to apply for these funds. We're still in the process of setting up a facilities review committee, meeting with county commissioners. They are busy right now identifying a new county manager, but as quickly as they settle that, Mr. Bill has told me that we started on the facilities review committee, and at that time, we'll approach the county commissioners about the possibility of applying for QZF funds. But basically, just letting you know that we have held up on those high skilled window repairs applied for this QZF fund. We've also learned, Mr. Moore believes, called John Clark with DPI.
Yes, Johnny Clark.
And we, we are currently, they currently have earmarked, Fort Wayne County Schools in the form of QZF funds, an amount of $1.5 million, which was more than, so in other words, we've already applied $1.5 million of QZF funding. We won't need near that much to complete the projects that I've mentioned, but that money is available to us, and probably it will be very easy for us to get that money, complete these projects.
It's interest free. Requires 10% match, but it is interest free.
That's made form of logic.
I need time match. I don't think we have any problem with that.
All right, so we're just basically giving you, just go ahead and see what you can find out about it and go from there.
And I understand that we have held up on those window repairs until.
We certainly have my lessons after that, so.
So, that's, that's made motion that we allow our board to explore the capability of our QZF funding. And we have a second. All in favor, say a aye. Any opposed? So moved. Very good. Security management, door locks, Dr. Ball?
Basically, we've already discussed this. This is the fact that we will not need to reconfigure the lobbies at Cartecky J, Southmacon, and Anahala if we go with the new door locks that were presented tonight. That will allow us to purchase additional cameras at possibly MBI Middle School in Highlands, would be my suggestion.
We don't have a figure for that yet. Dr. Agar.
We do not have, we didn't have, we'll say $15,000 on the configuration of the locks.
We know that those are roughly $4,000 a school we give or pay.
We have $40,000 approved, but I think we'll need to have an actual amount to approve correct. So I think we just approve disciplinary good work.
And I'm not asking for approval at this time, I'm just letting you know that we will not be moving forward with the reconfiguration of those lobbies unless you, unless you prefer that.
No, I don't think so. Stretch money as far as it gets. You need to send on that. Custodial, Angie?
This is just for your information. I'm working on RFP for custodial supplies, and I plan to post it on our website, hopefully by the end of this week or the first part of next week, and it's to obtain, hopefully, a better price for our, all of our custodial supplies for all of our schools, plus the central office, plus garage in Macon.
Now, when we're doing that, are we looking at different, looking at local people?
Anybody's eligible to be in once I post it, but I do have a local person that's interested, and I've assured them that I will let them know as soon as it's posted so they'll be able to pull it off and.
Do we just have one local company?
That's all that's spoke to me up to this point.
Do we put, do we put on the website, do we put anything out in the local paper?
I have, I did in the past. We did it four years ago.
Good. I think we wise, just put it out there, and then way, we've covered our bases. Every hour, all queue we can to get out there, make sure people notice, comment, give us much bid, that'd be great. All right. Thank you, Angie. Anything else? Okay, moving on to fund redistribution. Carlisle Elementary School.
Okay, the first one is Cartecky J, but all they're doing is moving the school pitcher money, $3,300 into the, the bulk of it into the general account, and then $500 into the long distance.
It's called three of these at the same time.
Okay.
Franklin High School?
That is a, they are moving $1,421 from the football fundraising account into, well, take that back, I forgot it backwards, taking $833 out of the varsity cheerleading account and $588 out of the JV cheerleading account to put it into the football.
to put it into the football fundraiser account. And that is to compensate them for the Panther passes, Panther cards that they sold on their. And the next one is $6,275 coming out of general athletics. They're giving each varsity sport listed there $325, and each JV sport $150.
We get permission to approve the funding redistribution.
Motion's second, all in favor? Any opposed? So moved. State budget?
Have a few amendments here. The bulk of it is we received an additional $66,000 in funding. The bulk of that was $63,278. That was a special developmental day money that Paula obtained for her pre-cave classes. So that's the bulk of it. So the rest of them are just moving from line item to line item to cover where we've spent.
Motion's accepted, second. Do I hear, all in favor, say if I say aye. Any opposed? So moved. Pause to be commended for pursuant, that's great. Surplus resolution.
These are some items that Tim and the technology department have gathered up that are no longer workable, and we have a recycling company that comes and picks them up, picks them up once we get a load. And these are the things that Tim's going to call tomorrow, and I set up time to dispose of them.
Assuming what this means, Tim, is the cost of repair, though, it would be more than it would be to replace them?
Yes, these are things to pull parts from or whatever, or just not operational. Definitely less than $30,000 for that. Yeah. But we do get.
We do scrap metal.
We do get a price per gallon for this recycled stuff. It's not much, but.
At least they don't charge us.
Right, exactly.
Dear motion to approve the surplus resolution, have a motionary second. All in favor, say if I say aye. Any opposed? So moved. We're getting there, national utility fund, we have already hit our supplement, has been taken care of. Board meeting scheduled, Dr. Baldwin. If I'm to skip something, I'll go, whoa, I'm, 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 head down the stretch now, get out of here.
Do you have a package?
And of course, as always, it's gentle. The only thing that only comes up is the 19th. That is not only normal, Fourth Monday, we do the Thursday, we do the holiday. And the same thing between, due to some of the political conditions.
Just a point of information, like June 16th, when we close out our fiscal year, June 30th, there's no way that we can be closed out by the 16th of June. So we might have to have a special call meeting before the end of June to finalize the, those final budget amendments for each time.
Okay. Yeah, four more. Any, at this point, anyone see any conflicts with full schedule?
I have this one.
Not on your, ten motion to approve.
I have a question to take these as is, and that we don't know what we could change, but we definitely.
That motion we have approved, tender schedule. There's a. I'll be back, say if I say aye. Any opposed? So moved. We're getting there. All right, Dr. Baldwin. Any other discussion items upcoming in the day?
Just these coming events, I'll share this with me, and I'll look over those and get this covered. Say we can have a go through these, and read through what y'all see.
I think it does it for our posted, any other items or anything that needs come for the board? None?
I'll do all that I can to make sure we don't have an agenda that's this long. A lot of things that we just had coming up this morning, but you can do that.
Boy, you do have your two policies.
Okay, yeah, and just as, for now, everybody, what we're going to do is we're going to have the next meeting will be December 2nd. We'll see if we can basically combine for a meeting, we'll be basically come out in our November meeting with our December meeting at that point in time, December 2nd. It'll be at Natahala. Missy says.
Missy Venus, Missy Venus.
As you can see, that's all we need, do I hear, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I'm looking to adjourn, do I hear a second? They got the inside wire.